Looking across the dais, we got Rick, Eric, Indra, Joel, Victoria. So we got four.
We've got five.
We've got five? Who's the fifth?
One, two, three, four.
Who's the fifth?
Victoria.
You're pleading the fifth?
Yes.
See, I'm making sure you're on your toes.
Well, I'm not sure that I'm accused of it, but yeah.
Yeah, you're accused to you. You are accused to you. Okay, so first on the agenda has been Squash today. Second on the agenda is interview with Urban Area Planning Commission candidates. We have JW available. JW Oler in the house?
It doesn't look like he's here. I've been texting Diane, but we do, if we want to have Richard go, he is online right now.
All right, so we're going to put JW on hold and still available if he shows up, but we're going to proceed with Richard. Is it Ackers or Akers? Okay, thank you, sir. So we... Hold on one second, I'm getting my stuff together. So I will go ahead and give the audience, or give the floor to you, Richard, if you want to give us a little bit of a background on yourself and tell us a little blurb of why you want to be involved in the Urban Area Planning Commission, and then we'll bring it back to the councilors and they may have some questions for you. So the floor is yours at this moment.
I appreciate it. Well, my name is Richard Akers. I've been in Oregon about 25 years now. I've been a contractor for the last 15 years. So I've built houses when Hayden Homes first came into the Medford area, I started building their houses. And then I've been painting and doing everything inside of construction for a very long time. I wanted to join just because I want to help shape the long-term future of Grants Pass, you know, but with thoughtful and balanced growth. I also want to make sure that the decisions impacting housing businesses and traffic, land use, quality of life, things like that, you know, are representing working families, small businesses, and builders. I do understand the impacts of development and policy on labor, housing, and cost here. And so I live here and work locally, and I am committed to the future generations. I had a bunch of stuff written down, so I'm kind of reading from it. We've been on a road trip. So, but I do want to encourage and expand where infrastructure supports growth. And it should match the capacity of roads, sewer and water, schools, and emergency services so it's not being bottlenecked in. But I do want to get on the commission for those reasons, to start getting involved, have a say. So that's about me. I'll hand it back over to you guys.
All right, thank you very much, Richard. I'll bring it back to council with some questions for Richard. Anybody? Rick?
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for your service in the Navy. Does your Navy experience also bring some history or just experiences to you that you could use in the Urban Area Planning Commission?
Well, obviously. Well, when I was in the Navy, I was the command, so I was actually leading the command. I was a fire attack division. And so I was always in charge of things like that, so I've seen a lot of overseen. But the over experiences, most of my stuff was in electronics. So I was all, I was an, actually an FAA 18 mechanic. I worked in the cockpit. But when I got out, a lot of that stuff wasn't existing, so I went back to school and got my degrees in renewable energy. And been working in contract ever since. So, I mean, it helps with being in the military, but directly relating to what I did in the military, not so much.
Okay, thank you.
I got Eric and then Victoria. Eric?
Thank you so much for applying and for your service. Wanted to ask you what you feel the most important skill for Planning Commissioner is, or for this particular position you're going up for.
Reliability and research, understanding the areas that we're trying to move into and the infrastructure of where it's going, and if it's actually a plausible reason, you know, not just expanding areas because we can, protecting farmlands, things like that, especially the high-value ones.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question or not, though.
Okay, I got Victoria and then Indra.
Hi, thank you so much for applying. And I would just like to ask if you were selected as a Planning Commissioner, what are your goals? What would you like to accomplish during your term?
Oh, clean expansion. I'd like to see the housing crisis that we're having right now in Grants Pass change. You know, I'd like to make affordable housing, you know, help with that, you know, the areas that we can expand into, and then not just letting a bunch of huge houses be built, but things that are possible for our area, you know, to actually cut back on the crisis that we're having.
Thank you.
I got Indra and then Joel. Indra?
Yes, I would also, excuse me, like to thank you for your service as well and for being here. What is your position regarding the granting of a variance to the code and when it's justifiable?
Well, if the variance are called for, you know, I mean, it's got to be, I don't dislike going in there and changing policy or changing things just because, you know, we have the ability to. It's got to be something that is, well, reasonable. So it's something that everyone would have to discuss. It'd be have to, I'd have to have a direct scenario, honestly, to answer that without... Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Did you happen to see the city council meeting regarding the variance on the appeal last meeting? And what did you?
I did not.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I apologize. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Any further questions, Indra? Joel?
Richard, I also thank you for applying and for contributing to the country as a whole. One of your goals you talk about was ensuring sustainable and inclusive growth and balancing expansion with preserving the character and livability we all cherish. What is the evidence that you use for sustainable and inclusive growth? And what is the evidence you use for preserving the character and livability we all cherish?
Well, evidence, I don't have so much evidence other than, you know, just my thoughts on the whole process. As being a builder, you know, I don't like going in and just putting a bunch of things in an area, you know, tract homes and things like that, you know, which is fine, but just, yeah, I don't really have evidence. What, can you explain what you would ask, what you're asking for a little more on that?
I'd like you to expand on it and then how you feel about it, and you can answer it whatever way you would like.
Well, I just don't want to see a bunch of big, huge skyscrapers and everything built into Grants Pass, you know. It's not necessary, not needed. You know, we're having a housing crisis with people, you know, regular families, regular people, you know. I feel like the houses and the infrastructure that needs to be built is based off of regular people, you know. We haven't allowed a lot of huge things to come into Grants Pass yet, so, you know, I'd like it to keep it more rural and things like that, you know, and expand when needed, but not without thought to it.
Sure. Well, I appreciate your thoughts, and it's something that we all think about as we move forward and we'll learn from each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Indra?
Yes, being a builder, have you ever experienced a conflict between the property rights of the person you were building for versus neighbors or other groups? And if so, how did you handle that?
So the only time I've ever had any conflicts in that were the setbacks, and that's when we were building in Medford. And the lot lines got 20 inches too close, and so everything had to be readjusted and moved over, you know. But we had to speak with the homeowner that they encroached onto because there was a lot of actual issues with, they went too far over onto their land. And then it was just mostly mediation in between the two, making sure everything was moved and worked out, and the foundation and everything, the forms were all pulled over the 20 inches to accept back for the cutbacks. And it was just, we made it happen without legal, I guess, issues. We just went through the plans, made sure it was moved, dealt with the contractors, nobody to have, make sure it was moved, and it was remedied.
Would you say you're a strong proponent of property rights?
Yes, as long as it's all detailed into it, you know. There's a lot of grandfather-in-laws and things like that that give people rights to travel through and move through properties, you know, that I have to be taken into consideration. But yeah, I do believe in property rights.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Hey, Richard, this is Mayor Scherff. I just got a quick question for you. You said that you have a lot of experience here in the building industry in Grants Pass and the Rogue Valley area and surrounding area. Can you, through your experience, what do you see is the most highest hurdle for local builders to actually get building permits through the city?
Oh, a lot of understanding of what the actual zonings are used for, you know. A lot, right now, I see a lot of the cluster housing being brought up and put up, you know. And so I feel like transparency is a hurdle, you know, people communicating with aspects and expectations. You know, sometimes I feel like when it comes into what the land can be used for and what people's expectations on what they want it to be used for come into conflict.
Perfect. Thank you very much, sir. Any further questions from council? All right, don't, we don't, looks like we don't have any further questions for you, Richard. I thank you again for your time and your participation.
Hey, thank you guys very much. Hope to hear from you guys. You guys have a wonderful day. Enjoy yourselves.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Bye. All right, do we have Keith available? I know we're a little bit early for him. Or do we have JW? Oop, I see somebody coming. And Karen is greeting him and directing him and pointing fingers. Oh, Rob's here. Yes, sir, go ahead.
So while it's on my mind, we have a situation, right, where we try to bring people in one at a time, and theoretically, we, so that everybody doesn't get the advantage of hearing other people's answers, right? That's why we do this. But with, you know, everyone having cell phones and our meetings being broadcast live, this sequestering doesn't really have much of an effect anymore. We found that out with a member of the Budget Committee. He acknowledged that he was watching the other interviews while, you know, he was waiting. So I'm not sure what we can do about that in the future. I mean, it really, and to have maybe some people watching, some of the applicants watching, and some others not watching, really even, you know, unlevels the playing field even more. So I don't know if we need to have people, when they're sequestered, understand that they're not supposed to be looking at their cell phones, or that needs to be explained to them, or I'm not sure how we handle that. But right now, we have an imperfect situation where people can watch and listen, and it didn't used to be that way, pre-cell phone, but now it is that way. So I'm not sure what we can do about that. Maybe we can discuss that at some point.
Thank you for bringing that up, Rob. I actually did never even thought about that until you actually brought it up. That's actually a true statement. We can, if the council decides to further that conversation, I think we can do that after these interviews are done, because, like you said, the ship has already sailed, so. But I believe that is a valid point for you guys to think about. At this point, who do we have? All right, bring JW in then, please. Thank you. Come on up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a little tiny bit about why you want to be on the Urban Planning Commission, and then we're going to throw a bunch of questions at you. How's that? Are you ready? All right, go ahead.
I'm JW Oler.
Could you move your mic?
Thank you. So again, I'm JW Oler. I'm the owner of Elite Designs Unlimited. I do house plans primarily.
Hey, JW, I apologize. The little silver button on the opposite side of you? Is there a red light on the mic stand?
Yes.
No, on that one there. I just, I don't see we were hearing you very well.
If you could...
Go ahead.
How's that? Better?
I think so, because basically, we're not the only people that are listening to you, so we want to make sure you're on mic.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm JW Oler. I'm the owner of Elite Designs Unlimited. I primarily do house plans. I have 36 years in business, almost 40 years in the field. I sat on the City of Arroyo Grande's Architectural Review Board from 99 to 2005. I had dealings with civil and structural engineers. I'm a businessman, and obviously I can dress and show up on time and be courteous to folks. So that's about all I got for you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Rick?
Thank you, JW. So you say you do house plans and so forth like that?
Yes, uh-huh.
So could you see that being a real advantage in reviewing different items coming to the Urban Area Planning Commission?
Sure, I would think so. Basically, like my past history in Arroyo Grande, we would look at commercial projects, subdivisions, grading and drainage plans, traffic locations, and basically ask the proper questions. Also, I sat on the board that did the historic guidelines in Arroyo Grande. And so I've done a variety of things involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
I got Rob and then Indra. Rob?
That says you've been in Grants Pass for 14 years. Is that right?
I've been here doing business for 14 years.
Okay. So often when people apply for committee or commission, they see things that they either think need to be, need to be fixed, or could be improved, and they've got input in their minds going on about what needs to be improved. Is there anything that motivated you to do this today, or things that you think that Grants Pass code needs to be improved, or any places you've seen where developers were stymied by our existing codes, or anything that jumps out at you that you think needs to be worked on?
Sure, I can tell you a few things. Biggest thing that I see is, in residential areas, is we always, in Arroyo Grande, we made it a point that, to provide parking, provide garages. It gets to a certain point where street parking is kind of a pain for folks, and it creates nuisances and problems. Obviously, you try to pay attention to what's going on in the community and changes. That's the whole thing as far as being involved. I feel like I could make a great improvement to the City of Grants Pass. That's my motivation, really.
So, okay, so parking is one thing that, in some ways, is kind of dictated by some state laws now, but it didn't, wasn't 10 years ago, wasn't when you first started here, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Anything else that jumps out at you with development that?
Just, just proper planning as far as usage of areas. That's the biggest thing to me that we always got involved with is, and that I see this as primary function, is basically helping people develop in a smart way and consistent with the area that's surrounding it.
I got Indra.
Yes, what do you feel is the most important skill for a Planning Commissioner to have?
Basically, the crux of it to start with is being a listener and a problem solver. And obviously, you need to provide proper and, how shall we say it, respectful input to folks.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? I think I skipped over Joel, so I'm going to let Joel go, and then Eric's after that. Joel?
Well, I think you answered my first question on what you hope to contribute as a member on this committee and our commission, excuse me. The other thing you have here that wasn't filled out in your application was community involvement. And do you have any community involvement that we need to be aware of or would like to be aware of?
Well, I'm involved with the Elks, and I have a long history with being involved with the Elks. But at the present time, I'm not too much involved with that organization. I've kind of taken a I've kind of taken a step back, but typically, I have 36 years as far as an Elk, and I try to be involved in the community and provide positive input into the community. That's the biggest thing is people need to do is be positive and have some sort of potential solutions to problems. That's what I would see.
Eric?
Thank you for applying. I had a question in terms of what Rob was asking you. You had mentioned about the parking, and I know we've got some of the state laws, they kind of hinder specifics as far as what you can and can't do regarding parking. I wanted to see if you had any ideas, thinking outside the box in terms of parking, what kind of ideas you would bring to the table for the position you're applying for.
Basically, the biggest thing is to try to, obviously, your hands are tied as far as planning departments and state laws, but you would try to encourage people to be cognizant of cars and pedestrians and that sort of thing, and being courteous to people around you. And obviously, you can't put your foot down with them, but you can say, you know, hey, come on, let's try to be good citizens. That would be my, they're kind of like shooing chickens. You kind of push them in the right direction.
Any further questions? I got Indra.
Yeah, just one more. For me, what is your position regarding the granting of a variance to the code when it's justifiable?
Well, I think you have to obviously look at all sides of the problem and solutions, and, I mean, if you really get down to it, you have no other solution other than you have to abide by the variances. That's just kind of hold your nose and take the medicine. That's just the way it is.
Any further questions from council? So I got a question for you. So you say your experience is in architectural drafting, is what you said?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, perfect. So how long you been doing that?
Almost 40 years now, believe it or not.
Very good. And you said a limited time here, and obviously you've been to other places that you're doing that, so my question revolves around, how long have you actually been reading municipal and building code?
Well, I've been involved with it for, like I say, I've been in business for 36 years, and then before that, I worked for another man for three years in the design business, and over 25 years in California dealing with state code, and we used to do plan checks that were about the size of a children's reading book.
Yes, I am very familiar with that.
So it's just, let's put it this way, I'm very familiar with red tape, and we, I always made it a practice to do what people requested. You have to, if it's a code, you have to abide by the code, and you have to read the code, and you have to understand the code. If you don't understand the code, then you pick up the phone, and you ask questions, but you have to, always have to deal with things that are put in front of you. That's the bottom line. You have to deal with them, one way or another.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Eric, looks like you got another question?
Yeah, thank you. I noticed you brought some, are they drawings there? Is that something you wanted to show us, or?
Well, I thought basically if, you know, you want to put forth an application, and you say that you can actually do something, you might ought to prove that you can actually do what you say that you can do. So I have a set of plans. If you'd like to look at it, that's up to you, but it's a big house. Lately, I'll be honest with you, I've been doing some stuff out of the area. This project is in Utah, and because of the length of my career, I'm, if I've done houses over 20 years, now they're calling me back to do another project. This one I did, did for the guy in Paso Robles over 20 years ago, and it's kind of a novel idea to do a person's home and then have them call you back 20 years later. It actually makes you feel real good about yourself. So if you care to look at them, that's fine.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any further questions from council? All right, I think that proceeds. Do you have any closing statements?
No, no, that's about it. I appreciate the opportunity to help you guys, and it's purely about community involvement and aiding the community. Grants Pass is a great place to live. What brought me up here as a young man is my aunt and uncle lived in Wilderville, and I used to come up here for the summer, and a matter of fact, I learned to drive up here, and that's the reason I came up here, is because it was a very pleasant place to be, and I have a lot of hopes and aspirations for this city, and it's a great place. It's just, we just need to iron things out in the world. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got our last candidate, which is Keith Traher, and it looks like we're going to, ship's passing in the night, and we'll come on up to the podium. And you can get yourself situated with the microphone, introduce yourself, and give us a tiny little blurb of why you want to be on the Urban Planning Commission.
Keith Traher, born and raised here, you know, for many years. What else did you want to know? Why do I want to be on the planning commission? Because I know the history of the area. I know a lot of the properties in the area and the things that affect and how the properties, how I think the city should grow, which would be a benefit, you know. My local knowledge would be beneficial, and I've been in a real estate appraiser come January for 36 years, and I do a lot of zoning changes and things like that, helping people through that process, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Got questions from counselors. Victoria?
Hi, thanks for applying. What's the most important skill that you believe a planning commissioner should have?
The most important skill?
Or set, or set of skills, yeah.
Well, they need to know how zoning goes and the state laws and the city laws that go with it, and then they also need to look at how things are going to project in the future, making sure that zoning goes, you know, you have multifamily, not all of a sudden go to real residential. You need to have a blended, so it blends things through, and also take into consideration the properties surrounding it.
Any further questions from counselors? Joel? Mike, you bet.
Thank you for applying and your involvement in the community and who you are. I appreciate that. On your application, you briefly stated your reasons and interest for the committee or the commission, excuse me, as seeing housing in large multifamily complexes being built in wetland areas and developments that do not flow with transitional development. Could you further expand on that objective and how that is associated with the code?
Well, part of what brought up the wetland issue is just because it's zoned, say, R18, and it's old farmland, doesn't mean you should just go out there and start building in that situation. There's several subdivisions in this area that they've gone in, put subdivisions in, houses in, and they ended up having water problems under the houses, and almost all the houses have to have sump pumps underneath them, and that's going to be a continuing problem. So looking at it in the future, that if, hey, maybe put them a little larger-sized lots, maybe build them up a little higher, so that way they don't have water underneath them, you would also still meet the water mitigation for the wetlands area to establish that, you know, we shouldn't be building on wetlands. So, and that was my biggest concern. And then also, with the multifamily, you shouldn't be building multifamily next to, you know, big two-and-a-half acre parcels or something like that that are nicer homes. You know, you need to have a blended, blended that, and that's where I think I could bring good historical point with that and with my work ethic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Indra?
Yes, you have a long resume of service to our community. Thank you for that. Have you ever applied for planning commission before?
No, this is the first time I've applied, so.
Okay, and so I would ask, why now, and what are your goals should you be selected?
Well, why now? I've sat on the sidelines for many years and helped people go through the planning process. I think I've been in business long enough that I can give back to the community in this direction. For years, when my kids were growing up, I gave a lot back towards that direction, towards the kids of the community and that. I'm still involved with some of that stuff, but I would think, I would like to see the future of the growth of Grants Pass be more beneficial and more attractive to people from outside the area wanting to move here, and be able to do it in a constructive way that would make sense for the long-term future.
Any further questions? Victoria, and then Eric. Victoria?
So how would you describe what you'd like Grants Pass to look like in 15 years? Just a general picture of where you see us going, with regards to building, of course?
In future? Yeah, well, we would like, I'd like to see us retain as much farmland as we can, because once it's gone, it's gone, but be able to establish so we have good roadways, walking paths, things like that, that, you know, people, that would attract people that want to come here from bigger areas, that want to have walking passes, which is what I just said, but be able to drive around, you know, traffic all the time is getting worse and worse, so we need to start thinking about that, and which areas can we expand the city? So, you know, it's service, it's going to have to expand. It's just, let's do it in a logical way.
Further questions? I have Eric.
Thank you so much for applying.
Yes.
And, you know, like Indra was saying, this is, you've got quite a, quite a resume here. It's pretty extensive. I noticed on there that you had the Young Marines, you were involved with them as well? Any service with that, or is just, you're volunteering as a battalion commander?
Well, I was, I was a unit commander and battalion commander for years. When I got out of high school, I tried to get into the military. I had a kidney stone at 17 years old, and so they wouldn't let me in because they didn't want me out in the field having a kidney stone. The local doctor wouldn't sign off on it, and after about a year, I decided, well, apparently the military is not for me, so I went on to college. But I was raised in a military household, so I have that ethic, and so when my daughter joined the Young Marines, I became involved with it and stayed the unit commander and battalion commander until I had COVID, and then I stuck with it a little longer and then bowed out, so.
Well, thank you for doing that. That's pretty commendable. I had one more question here.
Sure.
What is, so you have a lot of skills. What do you want to bring? I know it was kind of brought up before, but what do you want to bring to the table? What are some of the main things that you, that you feel would help out the city, that you, that you bring to the table?
Well, I have the local knowledge of different things of the area, like where the old city dump used to be, and where wetlands, historically where wetlands have used to be. I also think what I can bring to the table is my, you know, 35, 30, almost 36 years in the real estate industry, doing residential and commercial properties, of seeing how we can grow those in that right direction and make it sustainable for, in the future. I don't know, you know, it's been talked about, there is some of what they call commercial areas that they used to have, where they used to have small commercial areas, say like out in the Redwood area, that have a small market with a gas station, and where everybody from the local neighborhood could be able to go get those certain things locally, instead of just having to go to a big box store, and that creates more traffic. Not everybody can drive into town all the time. So that's one of the things I think I can bring to the table. But also, I know the zoning laws. I'm very versed in city, state, and county laws, wetlands laws, and I help people change their zoning or ask for variances, help them through the paperwork to do that in the right direction. And then also, I talk to clients sometimes and say, well, this doesn't make sense for you to be able to do this. It would make more sense because of the way the hillside is or something that you do this, and we get engineers involved and do that. So I do have that knowledge of years of experience.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Nope. Thank you. So got a question for you. So you're talking about, as a Realtor, you were able to adverse yourself in municipal code and building code, and you became not a stranger to that.
Right.
Any other communities that you worked in besides Grants Pass where you actually were involved with their municipal or building code?
Well, I did a lot of work for Curry County, City of Gold Beach. Mainly, it was Curry County themselves. They hired me as the appraiser to come over and do a bunch of work for them to help figure out what properties they wanted to swap, do land swaps with other public entities, and some of that. I do work, my main work, I work all over the state of Oregon, but my main work is from Lake County, Douglas County, Jackson County, Josephine County, and Curry County. But that's my main focus anymore, is just Josephine County, Curry County, and Jackson County.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, the point I tried to get across is basically, I think, as a growing city as we are, to have outside influence from other codes to actually help, you know, manipulate and build our code up. I said that that's just advantageous, so.
Right.
It's just trying to point out where your experience lies, and it sounds like you answered that very quickly.
Yeah.
Any further questions from council? I see none, so I'll give the mic back to you. You want a little parting statement, and then we can be done.
I just would like to see, you know, things done in a logical manner. That's my main thing, and obviously bring it to the council and let them make the ultimate decision, but be able to bring that experience that I have and put it in some common sense in there, and also with code, and say, here's what it is, here's what I think it should be, and go from there, and then that's about it, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your participation in our community. You're done. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if you guys have any more questions, feel free to let me know.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, so at this point in our agenda, we have bikeways and walkways committing nominations? And we've got a little, it looks like Wade's taking over? Yep.
All right, good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Wade Elliott. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director, and with me today, I have our committee chair for the Bikeways and Walkways Committee, and his name is Bob Lang. So he's available for any questions or insight or comments you guys might have later. Okay, so the first thing we're going to be talking about is the motions that were in front of you about two months ago from the Bikeways and Walkways Committee. Some of them were things like kiosks at the trailheads for Dollar Mountain. Those things have already been taken care of as part of the Dollar Mountain Trail and some of the projects we've done, but the one that we needed some input from you guys on was the Highland Avenue multimodal connectivity, and that's what we'll be talking about today. So the goal is to consider restriping Highland Avenue to include bike lanes for better multimodal connectivity between the two new trailheads for Dollar Mountain. One's on Highland Loop, and the other one is on Crescent Drive. I've got a few background slides here to kind of paint the picture of where we're at. So the first one is the Dollar Mountain Phase One Trail System was recently completed. Also, as part of that, the city has also installed two new trailhead parking lots. One's on Crescent Drive, which is off of B Street, and the other one is off of Highland Loop, which is kind of in the northwest part of town, up off of Woodson, Sinclair, Highland, up on that part of things. The Bikeways and Walkways Committee expressed an interest in creating a safe bicycle facility that would connect the two trailheads so that you could do a loop, so you could go, say, up off of the Highland Loop one and over the mountain, and then loop back around to your vehicle, which may be at the other trailhead or at the first trailhead. And during that investigation, they identified that there was a lack of continuous bike facilities on Highland, and they determined that that was a critical need for the area. Highland Avenue is identified as an arterial road per our transportation system plan, so the purpose of that is to move people in whatever mode of travel that they might be using efficiently. So it's not for a lot of turning movements, it's to get cars and bikes and peoples from peoples' people. peoples, people, from one area to another one. In that area, there's also two schools, Highland Elementary School as well as North Middle School. And if you've ever driven on Highland during pickup or drop-off time, it is pretty snarled with traffic, so there's not a lot of room for the vehicles, so they end up staging along Highland Avenue on the shoulder, which blocks the bike lane, specifically the one on the east side of the road. And currently, there's a few areas that still have on-street parking for the existing residences, and those currently preclude the striping of a bike lane. Arterial roads don't, if we were to build a new arterial, we would not allow on-street parking on it, because it's not for parallel parking or disruptions to the flow of traffic, whatever mode that might be, it's, so there wouldn't be parking if we built it today. Highland Avenue also lacks sidewalk connectivity, especially as you're around the schools, Highland Elementary, there's a lot of gaps in there that we're aware of. But it's also a difficult area to install sidewalks because it's built on the side of a hill. So if we were to look at it, there would be a lot of work involved, like retaining walls, chasing back people's driveways and approaches to make sure it's still usable as the road effectively gets wider. So the transportation system plan identified the need for this project, is project number 68, and it is for an urban street upgrade, which would include new sidewalks, likely would be an infill situation, and then stripe bike lanes on Highland between Bellevue and Sinclair Drive. Notably, part of that's already been done, so the county went from Cook Avenue all the way up to Vine Street and installed sidewalks and bike lanes along that section. So that part has been done already. And then also, the Safe Routes to Schools Master Plan, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it, but it's a good read if you do, a lot of good public and community involvement and input went into that. It was adopted by council as an addendum to the transportation system plan. And the framework of that master plan is that they took a look at each of the schools and then we gathered input from various stakeholders. And so it's set up by school and then they listed a priority list of projects in there. So for Highland Elementary School, projects number one and four pertained to this topic. And project one was the addition of continuous bike lanes for Highland Elementary along Highland Avenue. And the second one, well, I guess project number four, would be the infill sidewalks from Manzanita to Cook. And here's a look from our transportation system plan of what a typical arterial street would look like. So typically, there is a center turn lane, which effectively and efficiently would get vehicles out of the travel lanes to make their left turn movements instead of stacking traffic back. There's two travel lanes, one in each direction, and then there's bike lanes, one in each direction as well. The sidewalks area gives you a little bit of variability, whether you want a planter strip with a sidewalk behind it, or if you wanted a wider sidewalk, kind of like what we're doing on Allen Creek Road right now, we're doing a wider sidewalk with tree wells in lieu of having a planter strip. Oh, and of note, like I mentioned earlier, there's no parking in this drawing, because it's not for parallel parking. Now I'm gonna run you through some pictures and narrate a little bit, and these are all Google Street View pictures. So here's one, if we're looking at North Middle School, looking north, you can see there's two bike lanes, one on each side. On the west side, the left-hand side of your screen, you can see that there is a parking lane behind the bike lane. So in this area, there is still parking allowed, and I don't think that we're proposing any changes to those sections. So currently, the residences or whoever is needing to use that space can still park there. There are a few issues with that, specifically if you open a door and don't see a bike coming down the roads, down the hill, but we're not really proposing to change that at this point. The road is wider here than when we get a little bit further south on Highland. As we get further south, there's not room to do this. I found this one interesting, because I was talking about the school traffic as they're doing pickup and drop-offs. The Google truck was going by at the same time as school pickup evidently. So you can see on the right-hand side of there, the east side of the screen, that there's a long queue of vehicles that are pulled over that block the bike lane, and then the northbound lane needs to kind of shift over into the southbound lane to get around them. It works okay, but it's got its problems. Just something to consider. And then as we're looking south from Highland Elementary, and this would be about at the intersection of Morgan, you can see the two bike lanes and enough room to park on the right side there. Okay, so now we're getting a little further south, this would be closer to Sandy Drive or Starlight, you guys might be familiar with where Starlight is, where it intersects with Highland. This is where the bike lane stops, so you can see it there on the left-hand side of your screen. From that point south, all the way to C Street, there is no bike lane. It gets a little bit tight in there, there's a couple corners in Highland, but that's where the bike lane stops. And I couldn't find a picture, I guess really far down on this picture, you can see some cars parked there, but currently, the residences at times park along that side of the street. And at this point in the, in the bike lane, you need to merge out with traffic and, and go with traffic. It's not a real big deal if you're an adult that's really used to using bikes, because you're going downhill, you can keep up with speed of traffic, you can just kind of merge over. But I was also noting the elementary and the middle school in that area, so it's a little tougher for that age of rider. All right, and also in the transportation system plan, there is a metric in there that is called bicycle level of traffic stress. There's also a pedestrian level of traffic stress, PLTS and BLTS. And those are scored based on a myriad of issues. In this case, this would be in relation to bicycles, so you would look at how wide the bike lane is, whether it's buffered from traffic, how fast the speed is of the cars that are going by on the road, all those things factor into what your score is on the BLTS. BLTS one is best, four is the worst. They graded Highland as a three, which is not great, but it says that if you're an adult and you know what you're doing and you're brave, you'll be fine. So ideally, this section would be either a one or a two, that's a little bit more suitable for elementary school kids or middle school kids to feel safe using it. But it's not, and it's just existing conditions, it's how the road was developed over time. So now we get into what a project would look like that would fix some of these issues that were brought up by the Bikeways and Walkways Committee. A big caveat here is that I haven't done any engineering on this, we haven't mobilized any of our design folks, our survey folks, none of that, so this is me taking a wild guess at what things would cost and what it would look like. At the end of this, if you direct us to go further into this, we'll mobilize the troops and we'll get to work on it and come back with a more sharpened plan than this. So as I looked at it, we would likely redo the bike lanes painting, some of it's thermoplastic, we would redo the bike lanes, we'd be putting in some of the thermoplastic symbols to show that it is a bike lane, probably increasing the signage associated with it, and maybe adding some of that green paint that you see in places that denote that it is a bicycle lane. Over time, as you look on Redwood Avenue, you'll see that the green paint is the entire length of the bike lane. Turns out that green paint is really, really expensive, so we've dialed that back to just around the intersections that you know as you're crossing it and a vehicle that you should look out for bicycles. So likely, something around the intersections would be done here. And then we would be installing a new bike lane from approximately Sandy Drive south to B Street, where the bicyclists would then turn off on B to get up to the Crescent Drive parking lot. This would likely eliminate approximately 50 on-street parking spaces, that, I've never seen 50 vehicles parked in that section, but as I did the math, that's about how many there would be. And then also, we'd be installing share-o symbols, which would be kind of a bike lane and vehicle share of the road, you've probably seen them, there's a bike, bike symbol that's in the road in the middle of the travel lane. Those are typically an okay solution if you're on a low-speed roadway with low volumes of traffic, and then you can kind of share the road. So it's like, you'll see the signs say share of the road. So we would install those on B Street, Woodson and Highland Loop. So once you get off of Highland Avenue and into the lower speed, lower volume roadways, we'd go to share-rolls. If we took it a couple steps further, we would infill sidewalks and upgrade the ADA ramps on Highland, it'd be kind of a targeted approach around the schools. And then we would also look to upgrade or reconfigure the two pedestrian crossings you see in there. One's at Morgan and the other one's down by Valley View, I think. They work okay, but I don't think anybody feels safe enough to go stand out in one of those little concrete islands as a refuge, that's what they're created for and to slow traffic. They get hit a lot, and our streets crews are out there often fixing those. So we'd probably try to reconfigure those a little bit more. Okay, now this is where we get into the, don't hold me to these numbers, but roughly speaking, I think the bike facility work we could do for around $100,000 or less. Some of that stuff could be done in-house, as our streets crew could do a lot of the symbol installation, they could do some of the painting, some of the signage, we would probably need to take a little closer look at some striping and things like that, but I would think that's about the ballpark we're looking at there. And then if you chose to direct us to go forward with the sidewalk infill, I think we're in the $2 million range, and that's for the variety of issues that I said earlier, like the retaining walls, chasing back driveways, there's a bunch of asphalt sidewalk in front of Highland Elementary that is failing in places. It's a difficult place to build sidewalk. We have right-ofway in some locations, other places we don't, we'd need some right-of-way acquisition. There's reasons that nobody's tackled this project yet. And then if we reconstructed or reconfigured the pedestrian crossings, we'd probably be in the $100,000 range, because that would involve redoing those intersections where those are at. Financial considerations and call to action, and then, I don't know if Mr. Lang wants to speak for a minute, but to redo the striping on the bike lanes, we have a project, it's called TR 6406, that we stash a little bit of money in for redoing bike facilities, specifically painting, there's enough in there that I think we could take care of this project. There's also adequate funding for the pedestrian crossing enhancements at Morgan and Valley View, and it's in TR 6356, which is traffic calming, bike and pedestrians. That's the capital fund that I use for things like rapid rectangles or flashing beacons or kind of emergency targeted pedestrian issues. But I think we could probably handle it if you wanted to move forward. Now, if we are directed to move forward with the sidewalk infill, that will be a new capital project that we're gonna have to fund in future budgeting cycles. So with that, potential action, we're just looking for a little bit of direction in how you want us to move forward with this. And Bob, would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank the council for making Wade available, he's been a really important component to our group, and hopefully, we can anticipate some of these problems that are coming up down the road. I think Wade did a great job about talking about the different benefits that we'd have as a community, I think with the schools, there's a little kind of neighborhood grocery store along the way, and I think we're, we're kind of focused on the, the new bike trails, which hopefully been out to see. But there's a lot of other benefits that'll come in, I think, with thinking about this section of road. Thank you.
All right, thank you both of you guys, and I'll bring it back to council for questions. I got Eric, Victoria and Rick. Eric?
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any major concerns based off of safety concerns in terms of prior accidents or anything like that, that we have on record? Anything that we can use to, maybe we can get a, we can, the council could prioritize or can figure out what, what parts of town are, are worse, or if there's accident-prone areas, safety-related items, dangerous places?
Sure. I haven't ran a tra, a traffic report on this one. Anecdotally, we are fixing the pedestrian refuge islands at a far greater clip than I would anticipate, so I don't know if that's just due to the narrowing nature, they, if you've driven up there a lot, there are those little teardrop-shaped concrete medians with, sometimes they have a flashy light in them. And they make you actually slow down and go around it, and the, the purpose is to calm traffic in there, and those get hit a lot, so I would say that there's generally an excessive speed issue there, but I'd have to run it. Also, there's a potential that we could do some of these projects in the Safe Routes to School grant platform moving forward, which is why they're in the Safe Routes to School Master Plan too. But right now, they're not the top priority for me, the next one that we would look at would be Parkside Elementary along Bridge Street, just because of the speed and lack of facilities there. So that's the one that we've been putting in for Safe Routes to School, this one could be the next one after that, I'm not sure yet.
Thank you.
All right, further questions, Victoria?
Hi, will you look, go back to slide seven? That's, yeah, that one's fine. So, it's a pretty wide, it isn't wide the whole way down, but it is generally speaking a pretty wide street up here. If this were to be done, how much smaller, or would it make the driving lanes any smaller on any part of Highland? And the reason why I'm asking this is because of a beacon. And so if you could compare, if those, if there would be any similarities to making the driving lanes smaller?
Sure.
Thanks.
Generally speaking, they'd stay the same size. What, I mean, there's only so much room to go, so where we'd be installing the new bike lane, if we moved forward with that, we would be cutting out the parking to give us the extra room, but the travel lanes would stay the same. Yeah.
Further questions, I have Rick?
Thank you, Wade. Was there any consideration given for a multimodal path, because then you could incorporate both the adults and the younger children, especially with the elementary and mid-high school?
We thought about it briefly. It would be likely very, very, very expensive, because you'd have to put in a new facility on one side of the road, shift things over, it'd be a lot of retaining walls.
So when we're looking at the slide behind you there, it seems like that could be, have potential for widening out to be, become a multimodal, and then could you use Safe Routes for school for part of that funding?
I think we could, when we put in for an application, it could be for whatever we want to address the issues that we have in our master plan. So if we came forward and said we wanted a multimodal path, then we could sure put in for that. But yeah, I mean, if we, let me get the pointer up here. So if we expanded it out this way, the drop-off is really sharp here, so you're gonna end up putting in a pretty good-sized retaining wall on this side. Over here, I know we have right-of-way issues, so we'd end up acquiring quite a bit of it to move over that way. And that's kind of the issue with all this, even as you go further up the road, is that if you widen it, you end up putting a large retaining wall in there. You could do some amount of shifting around, like move all the traffic to one side, maybe buy some room, but you'd still be likely in the same situation and eliminate parking.
Okay, and is it in your intent, or do you foresee where the bike lanes would be used by younger children?
It's the intent, that being said, I mean, I don't think the reality of that is real great, because we would have to expand the roadway. So as an example, right here, you got our towing mirror here, you got a love on Ford's, and it sticks out there. It appears to be kind of in the bike lane, but you're not gonna be able to expand it without doing a wholesale reconstruction project. So a buffered bike lane is likely out of the question, unless we eliminated parking all along this section too, and then, then we could probably get a buffered bike lane in there. And if you did that and you had some plastic delineators or something, I think it could get used by different ages and stages, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions from council? I got Rob and then Indra. Rob?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Wade, a few, few questions. So on slide five, and you mentioned the Safe Routes to School Master Plan, you had project number one, continuous bike lanes on Highland Avenue, and project number four was add new sidewalks to Highland Avenue. So why was it, or maybe it's not, but it appears as if bike lanes were given a higher priority to then sidewalks in that, can you explain that?
I don't think that I can. Interestingly, I think number two was, was the crossing at Morgan. The staff there, as I recall the conversations, felt that there was a lot of, it wasn't very safe feeling for the kids to cross there. They always have a crossing guard there every morning to help them, help facilitate that, but I think project number two was that. And then number three was some work on Hawthorne, as I recall. And then fourth was the sidewalks. So no, I don't, I don't really remember the context there.
Yeah, I guess in part because it is a hilly area and it's quite likely, certainly for the elementary school, I can't really see kids riding. certainly for the elementary school, I can't really see kids riding to school there. To me, sidewalks would be by far a higher priority than bike lanes there for the children anyway, for the Safe Routes to School, but, um, so that's why I, I question that. Also, do you know, uh, on the pedestrian, I forget the term you used, but the, uh, the island in the middle of the street, um, does the one at Valley View get hit a lot more than the one at Morgan?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I can tell you why. We can talk about that afterwards. It's, it's pretty obvious, especially if you drive it at night.
I think sometimes that flashing light sucks people in there like a moth, but.
It's, it's a different, it's a different reason, but.
Okay.
The, um, also I just need to add that, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but there is not always a crossing guard at Morgan and Highland and it's, it's, you would think there would be.
Yeah.
And it's, he's not, um, consistent. It's not even close to consistent from what I've seen.
Okay.
So in other words, you can't really, I guess my point is we can't really rely on a volunteer crossing guard to solve this problem. It's nice if it works, but it needs to be engineered, I guess. So, um, as far as questions go, oh, so you mentioned to, uh, Rick, that you felt that multimodal path, you know, would be really expensive and all the reasons there. But as far as expense goes, how does that compare to the right-of-way and the retention walls and things like that, that just, just a sidewalk would, uh, would, would entail?
Well, I mean, it depends. So if you could start from a clean slate, like there's no road there and you have enough right-of-way, uh, it would be pretty comparable. You could just shift the entire roadway over and then build a larger multimodal path on one side. And it would make a ton of sense because it would be on the school side likely. Uh, but in this case, I'd be trying to preserve the existing roadway and curb lines and all that stuff. So to do a multimodal path, you would need a lot more right-of-way and space on one side of the road or the other. And right now it's kind of, uh, symmetrical and so you'd have to acquire a lot more on one side. So I think it would be more expensive unless, even if you had to move the road more, it'd be a lot more expensive.
So, uh, thank you. So with regards to the sheroes, I'm trying to be clear. Did I understand that you said that the sheroes would be on B Street and other streets as you get off of Highland, but not on Highland itself?
Yeah, yeah, and that would be, the reasoning would be because you've got lower speeds and lower volumes of traffic. Yep. And it's a cost-effective approach. It costs a couple thermoplastics and some sign.
So, so basically the sheroes on those side streets would essentially be in lieu of bike lanes?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we could do more, it just, you know, it's just all cost more money.
Uh, thank you. Further questions? I got Indra.
Yes, thank you. It seems like this came before us for one reason, which was to connect the bike lanes between the trailheads. And so then the, the safe routes to school, although that is a master plan, was like a secondary thing and these sidewalks are a secondary thing. So the, the main consideration, um, would be people want bike lanes to connect the loops. Um, is that correct? And then this other stuff was kind of thrown in, like while, while we're in there, let's do this?
Sure. My opinion is that it depends on your perspective. So the bikeways and walkways was seeing some efficiencies with the newly created, uh, bike trail system on Dollar Mountain. And then I added in the stuff from the TSP, the Transportation System Plan, as well as the Safe Routes to show that it's not just this group that wants it for their mountain bikes, that there is more people that have looked at it based on their perspective and thought it was important. But yeah, no, you're absolutely correct. The bikeways and walkways was just thinking about connecting.
Okay.
Trailheads.
I've, I've lived in that area nearly fifteen years. It's a very established residential area. Is there any, uh, increase in traffic, new building going on where we would want or need to make that a major artery?
Well, I mean, the goal would be, as we look at a more holistic approach, is that it was identified as an arterial to connect through the railroad crossing, Dimick, which we've talked about previously, uh, into Oak Street to get you down to G and Bridge. So that's why it was designated as an arterial. Uh, no developments likely not going to happen in the area. It's built out.
So we're looking at making that a major artery, like?
Not really. I mean, to go in there and do a reconstruction project would cost tens of millions of dollars. So no, we're, we're talking about kind of a work with what you got kind of approach, uh, stay within the right-of-way, try to make it as cost-effective as possible.
Right. But when you talk about going through G Street or J Street and doing all that, um, have, how does it work with the neighbors? Like, have you had any interaction with neighbors? Are they notified? Are they asked? Are there meetings? How does that work when the city decides to do such a thing?
Yeah, um, it depends. So a lot of people aren't very engaged, but as you think about the Transportation System Plan, there's a very large public involvement process that's involved. Realistically, a lot of people aren't that interested in it or don't know or think that it is going to affect them. So that's one opportunity that people would have to comment on, you know, how their street is classified or whatever, or what projects are our priority. When it comes down to us actually doing a project, we send out postcards, um, that we would do before construction happens so that they're aware of the construction. If we need right-of-way from the properties, then we send a person out there in pub, in person. Usually it's me, sometimes it's one of our, um, engineering techs to go talk to them and then we have to go through a negotiation process for the right-of-way. And on projects like this, if somebody was to say, no, I'm not selling it, it's not a situation that we would likely try to do condemnation. If we did, that would be something you guys would have to do. So that's how we talk to them and we work through it. There's design considerations that we can do to help, help it along. We haven't ran into a lot of people that just say no, but it's possible.
When you say that, you haven't run into a lot of people. Are you talking about every project the city's ever done? I mean, what are you talking, you haven't, you're not talking about Highland because you haven't actually reached out yet?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I haven't done any engineering on it. We're, we're here right now to see if you guys want to move forward with it. So no, I haven't gone out and talked to people on this one. I'm just talking historically speaking, if you look at B Street or Beacon or any of these other projects, um, Safe Routes to Schools up by Lincoln Elementary, generally people are pretty favorable and they want to help the city and the pedestrians and bicyclists. And if it involves relocating their fence or digging up their prized tulips and relocating it, those are things that we work with them on.
So no outreach is done prior? It's all the council decides and then you just kind of tell people? Is that how that works?
So are you, so i- in relation to this project?
Yes.
We would talk about that.
Yes.
Um, yeah, we would start the design process and then if we needed to contact them about acquiring right-of-way, we would do that early in the process because it would potentially affect how we design the project. Large-scale projects, what the city's going to do, Transportation System Plan, that all is through the public outreach processes that we do during the Transportation System Plan. So that's way ahead of time.
Thank you.
Uh, further questions? I got Rob and then Victoria. Rob?
Yeah, I have a question for Bob. So, so Bob, um, just gonna, uh, kind of share information first with the rest of the councils. I've been the liaison to this committee for a couple of different times, but it seems as though, my observation is that, uh, could be seventy to ninety percent of the time that that committee has spent more about bikes than pedestrians, even is, even though it is called Bikeways and Walkways Committee. But it's clearly not fifty-fifty from my, my observation. Would you, uh, uh, how, how would you say the priority should be on, uh, sidewalks and pedestrians, especially in the area of two schools? Because they seem to be, to me, to be deficient now. And I know in the committee itself, that we don't really talk much about the pedestrian part of it, but near the schools, what, what, what weight would you place on the importance of having, uh, good sidewalks going to the schools?
Well, thanks, Rob. And, uh, it should be that the committee is focused on all those issues and there shouldn't be more of a, a weight to bikes. I think, uh, in general, we have a lot of committee members that kind of come from the biking community and they tend to be a little more motivated and that might be why. But, uh, certainly I think the pedestrian issues are just as important. And then I would, uh, also talk to the council about often, you know, if you help with the pedestrian issues, then it would of course help with bike issues and vice versa. And I think especially in this case, Wade had one of the images, uh, up. I don't know if you could find it for me, Wade, is where the bike lane just kind of ends? Yeah. So, so if you're on the west side coming down, um, where do you go on your bike? You just, you would just go right up to the curb and then there's no place at all for the pedestrians. So the way that Wade presented this is kind of a tiered approach to get us, uh, through this time with this particular road. So, uh, from here on down is where the parking would be, uh, eliminated and, and you'd of course reach out to the homeowners before we did that and have some kind of process that they could talk to us about it. Uh, but then, uh, then that bike lane would go there, the pedestrians are still over on the other side of the road until we do that two million dollar, um, uh, sidewalk infill. So it's, it's kind of a staged approach, Rob, uh, that I think if we start dealing with the easier, it's kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will, to help with the bike issue. But that'll also help, I think, later with the pedestrian issues for kids getting to school. And I, I would say that I have noticed, uh, some kids do ride their bikes and they tend to use that previous picture. There's a pretty good established bike lane on that east side. And so I, I had, I do see a lot of kids using that in the mornings.
Yeah, I just, just a, a brief comment on that. The, the bike, um, you know, the bike racks at the school are, are not very full, but the point is if we had better bike lanes, they might be full.
Absolutely.
So our hope would be, I guess, that'd be a way for kids to get to school, yeah.
Uh, thank you. Further questions? I got Victoria and then Rick. Oh, and then Joel?
Yes, I wanted to ask about, uh, B Street and, uh, Woodson. So you were just putting the shero symbols there? No bike lanes on B Street or, um, Woodson?
Yeah, that's kind of the plan at this point. If, it's kind of a tiered approach, like Bob said. If in the future it feels like an unsafe situation, we could go in there and see what we can do. Uh, B Street, as you start working towards Crescent, is steep, it's got some corners, not a lot of room in the road, but also low traffic volume. So I think it makes sense in that situation, but in the future, we could move forward with a bike lane if, if there was a need for it.
So the sheroes would be a lot like it is on Beacon now, I'm guessing, on B Street at this point?
Maybe, yeah, uh, but maybe a better example would be Lawn Ridge. Up on the top of Lawn Ridge. You'll see the symbols in the road, but it's a low volume. Beacon's got pretty high volume of traffic, so it's a little different, but yeah, same concept.
Oh, thank you.
Further questions? I got Rick and then Joel.
So I have another question for Bob. Has your committee discussed in any detail or even raised the subject of a multimodal path in this location?
Uh, no, the, it wasn't called for in the transportation plan. Um, there are a few that we still have to go, which are going to be big construction projects that, uh, down around the parks and stuff. But if, you know, if, if that was, uh, I guess, uh, if the money and the time and the efforts for, I mean, a multimodal path is always preferred, especially for getting kids to schools because it gives them a buffer from the traffic. But there's other ways you can handle that buffer, the traffic that Wade's better to tell you about. But, um, you know, you shot, saw the, the graphic that you had. Um, there's very few places that we can do that full arterial design, so we're always compromising that. But there's several steps that you can give another buffer to the pedestrians, uh, from the traffic beyond a multimodal path, but that's kind of the, the, uh, nirvana of, of things. Yeah, go ahead.
So do you feel since the subject is before us right now, it might be worthy of your committee to review the multimodal concept and see where our dollars should be, you know, in the future? I mean, we're looking at a project now, but do we hold those dollars off for a multimodal path in the future? Or do we just go ahead now? And I didn't know if your committee would, would want to review something like that.
Yeah, we could review that. I think that, um, for now though, moving forward, I think it'd be kind of the low-hanging fruit would be, um, dealing with that parking issue and the bike, uh, and all that would, you know, not preclude a multimodal path down the road.
All right. Thank, thank you.
Further questions? I got Joel.
So I, I just want to make, confirm what I've heard and, uh, and then I had a couple clarifications if I heard correctly. There was three effects of implementation associated with, uh, the continuous bike paths on Highland. One of the effects of implementation of that was, uh, a circular route for the, um, bike park. And, um, I, you don't have to answer it now if you want to hear the other two questions first, but, um, the question on that was, i- is there one direction up there in the bike path? I, I haven't taken my bikes, my mountain bike up there, uh, and I haven't walked the trails, uh, so that, are they unidirectional? So that's how, it's, or it's easier to go one way? So you want to loop around there or, uh, what, what is the advantage of that?
Yeah, I, I really.
Rather than just turning around, going back up?
That's a good, a good question. Uh, so what I, I would expect people to do, uh, kind of what Wade was describing, is they would park their vehicle at the bigger parking lot that we have on the north side now. And then if they want to get back to their vehicle, they might ride out and come down B Street. I think that's going to be a pretty common thing, which right now they'll have bike lanes to be able to do that. But, uh, to be able to, uh, go the other way around, maybe they park at the Dollar Mountain Trailhead, which would be a higher elevation.
Right.
And then drive down to the other side, which I could see people doing that. There you would come to that, that spot that we showed in the photograph where there, your bike lane just basically ends. And so that would be the section that, that I think is critical because of that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So then the, uh, the next effect of implementation was, um, um, it would be, uh, built to a standard that's safe for adults, but the effect of implementation for kids, it would be a little more arduous or unsafe. Did I hear that correctly?
I think that's, um, a fair assumption. There's things that we could do, like eliminate more parking further up and buffering bike lanes, um, if you wanted to go that route.
Okay, so that effect of implementation is correct. And then the, um, actually there's two more. The, um, pickup of school people in that congestion, that seems unavoidable and it's going to be a bottleneck that could be hazardous.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's an excellent point. And I think that's part of what we're trying to tackle with, well, what the state's trying to tackle with the Safe Routes to School project.
Sure.
Um, is that if you can get more kids walking and more kids biking, there's less cars that drop off and pick up. And if the parents feel more safe to allow their kids to do that, um, but that's a, that's a lofty goal.
Yeah, having picked up my kids a lot, I know that it's going to be hard to change that use pattern. Um, okay, so there's that effect of implementation. And then the, the last effect of implementation probably is minor compared to the first three and that's that, uh, loss of parking spaces, um, along Highland, which, uh, you would expect that not to be parking on there anyway because it's more of a thoroughfare.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, ideally, yes, but also we have to understand that a lot of these roads have developed over time and, you know, likely when this was built forty, fifty years ago, it probably wasn't an arterial at that time. I'm not sure.
So, so just to summarize, it, uh, it provides a loop for the recreation mountain biker, uh, between both parts. It, uh, creates a safe path for adults on the street. It's a little more arduous and, uh, potentially unsafe for children, the, the design. Um, we still have the conflict with the people dropping off at, at the school, which we have right now, so it, it doesn't make it worse or, or better, I would guess. I'm not sure. With the signing, it probably would make it a little better. And then the, uh, loss of a little bit of parking on a street, that's a thoroughfare that we don't, in the long-term, plan to have parking on. Is that correct?
Seems fair.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions from councils? All right. See you then. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
Small, teeny-tiny presentation and your lengthy comments and questions. Bring it back to council for a further discussion and/or action. Rob?
Yeah, I think, um, Bob's description of what he called, I think, low-hanging fruit, uh, creating, if I got this right, Bob, creating the, uh, loop for cyclists from one, one of the parking areas for Dollar Mountain to the other, I think, um, uh, probably makes a lot of sense because we're hoping that that, um, I mean, we're, we're hoping that Dollar Mountain. we're hoping that that, I mean, we're, we're hoping that Dollar Mountain is, is a real attraction in coming years. And I could see in two to three to five years it being a real big attraction, especially if we end up with events up there and things of that nature, which I'm sure we will. And that's relatively low money, too. That's like, so it's low hanging fruit in a couple different ways. So, I'm definitely very much in favor of that. All the other things are such big challenges and I'm not, I'm not shying away from them, but to me, having sidewalks to and from schools is just like, kind of like the bare minimum in, if you're going to actually have any kind of actual city government. It almost seems like sidewalks to the schools is pretty high on the list or should be. But also that comes with a bigger price tag. So, I'm definitely for the first, the loop for the cyclist, because it's fairly easy and fairly cheap. I'm interested in discussing the rest of it, because I also think the rest of it's important and will actually improve quality of life and improve people, kids walking and biking to school and would also diminish the traffic. But the first one, I'm definitely in favor of, creating the, the bike, the bike lanes for the cyclist, for the mountain, for the mountain bike, the mountain bikers, basically, from going one end of that park to the other.
Thanks, Rob. Further discussion? I got Joel.
I think the bike, bike lanes is a, a no brainer thing. The, I also would support the adequate funding for the pedestrian crossing enhancements for traffic calming bike and ped and pedestrians. I think it's a, a good investment for our money for the future and needs to be done along with the bike lane, especially if there's going to be increased traffic from bikes along, along that way. So, I would support those first two. And then the, the larger project or the multimodal project that Rick talked about, I, I would leave that for some future council to consider.
Any further discussion? I got Rick.
I'd, I'd also be in favor of item one of striping the bike lanes and so forth, but also like to put in a wish list of the multimodal path and that to be on the table for future consideration and just direction as we go in the future. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion from council or pinpointing down directing staff in a direction? Indra?
Uh, yes, so I'm, I, I think the bike lane would be a good idea. I'm not against the Dollar Mountain bike lane, but just being in that neighborhood and I know people that live on that street, there is a lot of, there are a lot of cars that park towards the south end of Highland, because they don't, they need to. Or if you have guests there and you have your car in your driveway, your guests have nowhere to park and they would have to go, I don't know how far. So, I'm, I am very concerned about that. Now, if the people affected don't care, then I don't care and I would say, go for it. But right now, I, I don't know how many are affected or who even cares about that. There's, there's no information on that, but that's a long stretch of road. And to my knowledge, I drove to Highland and north for years and years. To my knowledge, it's, there's no issue there with the traffic. Yes, the school times, it, it does back up, but that, the bike lanes would be full of cars during that time, so that wouldn't, wouldn't help it. So, so I'm a little torn, because that is my concern, is the people who've had homes there, it's an established neighborhood, they've been there a long time, and would it really be a detriment to them or not? I'm not sure.
Further discussion? I got Rob.
So, let, I think we need to define what we're talking about here, because as far as the, the initial discussion about the bike lanes to be able to service, basically one side of Dollar Mountain to the other, Wade, could you tell us again exactly where those would run, from what cross street to what cross street? Because Indra mentioned the south end of Highland, and I'm not even sure we're talking about the south end of Highland at all.
Yeah, so that would be from B Street to approximately Sandy Drive, which is close to Starlight. It actually terminates between Starlight and Sandy. They come in at two different sides.
Okay, so from B Street to Sandy Drive?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, so we're talking about, like, in further north on Highland, there's spots that have bike lanes and parking, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I know that that's not ideal. I know that when I'm in the bike lane and somebody's parked, I do swing way out, because I'm concerned with doors and so forth. But, but there are, they do to exist, bike lanes and, and parking. So, from the section of Sandy to B Street, are we talking about bike lanes and parking or just bike lanes?
I think it gets too narrow there, so you're likely looking at just a bike lane.
Okay, so.
It may end up being able to be buffered there a little bit, but there wouldn't be room for both.
Okay, so then it's just bike lanes down to basically B Street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? I got Rick.
So, Wade, I have another question for you. On Highland, through the whole section there, isn't that 25 miles an hour?
That's correct, except during school times, but yep.
Okay, so if you have a bicyclist heading south on Highland, I think with electric bikes and most adult, serious bikers today, they have no difficulty keeping up with traffic at 25 miles an hour. So, is it really, I'm saying, necessary to disturb the current arrangement if the bicyclist can keep up with traffic? Do you have a?
Well, I can tell you that I have ridden my electric bike down there and I can stay pretty close to 25, yeah. But I'd feel a lot more comfortable in a bike lane. But, yeah, that's, I think, an option C or whatever, is that we could do charrows when the bike lane ends, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? I got Rob and then Indra. Rob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to have to disagree with, there is now a, what would you call it? The, the speed, the speed readout as you come down there. There is some slight undulation there, there's some slight ups, some slight downs. Not that many people are going to be riding 25 miles an hour there. I know that when I go past the, the speed checkpoint every day, I'm about 18 or 19 miles an hour and I'm, I'm not going slowly. I'd have to push a lot harder to get to 25. And frankly, that's on my e-bike. My, actually, my, we'll call it my analog bike, is actually a little bit faster, but I'm still not going, you can't count on bicyclists going, keeping up with traffic there, especially since a lot of the traffic goes way more than 25. But it's, I don't think that's really realistic to think that bicyclists are going to keep up with the flow of traffic there, because I very, very seldom do. And I'm not, I'm not slow, I'm not overly fast, but very seldom do I keep up with traffic there. I'm, I'm getting passed a lot.
Further discussion? I got Indra.
This is a question I should have probably asked earlier. So, the funding is coming from TR 6406, bike lane striping. Is that a fund specifically for bike lane striping? And how much is in that fund?
Um, it is, so we have different capital projects within the transportation fund, similar to water or wastewater or LPs or anything. And so, we've designated certain projects through the budget process to have money. And so, we use it as a, a piggy bank to save up money to do certain ones. That one's a little bit more, we throw like $10,000 a year at it and it's accumulated. I think there's 130,000-ish, maybe 139,000 is about what we've got in that one. And the intent is to periodically provide maintenance on the bike facilities.
Throughout the city?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I could, to add to what Wade just said, we're obligated to spend a certain amount of our transportation dollars on non-motorized vehicle projects. And so, that's why that money gets put away. It's one of the requirements from the state that we have to spend money on either bike or pedestrian projects. So, we accumulate those funds, primarily use them for bike striping, but also for potential pedestrian projects. Good point. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? I got Victoria and then Rob.
So, I, I have another question for you, Wade. Thank you. I'm leaning more towards just creating the bike lane. I think it's important to do with connecting the, connecting the High Glen with, with B Street. So, but I'm wondering if, if we were to allocate those dollars now, but we did not decide to do the reconstruction of the pedestrian crossing, would that create any difficulty doing that later? Or is it just, we could do one now and the other one five years from now easily?
Yeah, I think they're pretty much independent of one another. Yep. So, I could, you could pick them off or you could do the sidewalk section in phases or it could be broken up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Further discussion? I had Rob and then Joel?
So, Wade, up and down. So, on the pedestrian crossing, so the existing ones clearly are, you know, almost, it's almost like, they almost like attract, it's almost like they're attracting cars. So, it's almost like maybe even worse than not having them at all. But, so what, if you go to rebuild those, what, what would those look like and why would they, why and how would they be better?
That's a good question. I think we would probably employ one of our smart engineering consultant firms to figure that out. Part of me thinks that at least the one closer to Valley View, it might be better just to take the thing out of there. I think it's kind of a nuisance, but maybe there's something that we could do to make it better. The one up at Morgan, though, I think it serves a pretty good purpose and we'd want to really look at how the traffic moves through there. And there might be some really smart solution that helps the pedestrians cross as well. I'm not sure, though. But it's, there's no stop control on Highland and that's kind of the issue. There is on Morgan, but, so I'm not sure what the solution is yet.
So, would you ever consider having one of the, the push button flashing light situations like we have on, near the Gospel Mission?
Yeah, we could. That'd be one.
Because they seem really effective as far as being safe for pedestrians. They're super effective, seems to me to be super effective.
Yep, I think that's something we'd look at. Typically, we like them a little bit more in a, a non-intersection location, so like mid-block, so that people can stack up more, but we might be able to do it there, too. Because then you get the situation where traffic is stacked up on both sides while the lights flashing, but the cross street doesn't really know why they're stopped sometimes. And so, they'll make their turning movement like, oh, score, traffic stopped. But there might be some way around that, too. Yep.
Further discussion? I got Joel.
I just had one quick question. The funding for the pedestrian crossings, we already have that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? I'm going to ask again, any further discussion, because I have, I am absolutely lost on what direction you guys want to send these guys in, because you asked a bunch of questions. And so, I think at this point, if you don't have any more questions, do you guys want to discuss it amongst yourselves on what you feel that you want to go forward with? They are calling for some action here, so if you feel that you don't have enough information or you want questions, you can direct them in that manner to come back to you, or you can figure out blah, 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 blah. I'm putting you guys on the spot. Joel?
It's good to be put on the spot. That's, that's nice. So, for discussion purposes and where I am personally, I, I will make a motion and we can have discussion on that and, and I'll make a motion to implement the bike lanes and also the pedestrian crossings for safety, especially for our kids.
Okay, I got a motion to initiate the bike lanes as presented? Everything, Joel?
Yes.
Not the middle one?
Not item two.
Okay, so you are making a motion to.
Item one and two. Bullet point one and two.
To go forward with bullet point one and two, which is?
One and three.
One and three?
One and three.
You said one and two. Okay, so excluding the reconstruction of the pedestrian crossing enhancements, so da, 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 da. Okay, does everybody understand that motion? Okay, so the motion is the call to action slide, which says financial considerations, there's adequate fundings for the bike lane striping and new capital projects, there's adequate fundings for. Okay, you got to state that again, Joel, because I'm confused as well.
To me, it's pretty straightforward. I made a motion for the bike trails and the, and the funding associated with that, bullet number one. And then bullet number three, where the fundings is also available for the traffic calming bike and peds for safety, associated with the mountain bikes and with the schools and with the traffic.
Thank you, Joel. Does everybody understand any of that motion? I will be looking for a second if you want to proceed. I have a second from Victoria, so I have a motion on the table to proceed with bullet point item one and bullet point item three with a second. Any further discussion? Rick?
Mr. Mayor, it, number two, one, it is one and two.
Yeah, it's one and two. I'm not sure that the three is the one that's the large capital $2 million project that we have.
It's different on our pages. That's probably the.
Get a change on that.
Oh.
That's what's wrong. That darn Wade guy? Sorry, I am so sorry.
I'm trying to conform to the slide and make bullet point one and two.
And I'm, and I'm glad that we had a sacrificial lamb that came forward and said that he did mess that up. And you see my confusion now?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, on this slide, it's bullet one and.
On this slide, it's bullet one and two.
Okay, so to reiterate, you have a motion to go forward to approve bullet item one and bullet item two, as shown on the screen, with a second. Further discussion? I have Rick and then Rob. Rick?
Rob mentioned including flashing lights for the pedestrian crossing. Would that be included in bullet two?
Yes. Yes.
Good, okay, thank you.
Rob?
So, as far as cost that goes beyond monetary here, I, I wonder if council needs any more input as far as the, from the houses, the property owners that are going to have the potential parking prohibited in front of their house. We're basically about to skip right over that part of it without really any discussion or not much discussion. So, I'm having trouble, I, I mean, I, I literally ride it every day, but I'm having trouble really picturing, I don't remember people parking on the street in that, in that section at all. That's my perception of it, but I could be wrong. And I'm, I'm wondering if council needs more, some more input on what those property owners might think or, or just an observation as to how, how often, over the course of a month, how often those parking spaces are used? Because that's part of the cost of, of doing this, not just, it's just a, not just monetary. So, I'm wondering if we need to do that before we move forward.
Further discussion? I got Rick.
So, on bullet item number two, in the normal process, Wade, would it include contacting those property owners before action was taken?
Um.
Or it's, is the property only, owners only involved with pro, item one?
Probably just item one. Item two wouldn't likely impact unless we needed right away from one of those corners.
Okay, so then revising my question, so in bullet item number one, is the normal process include contacting those property owners?
Typically, it doesn't. But at your direction, we certainly can. I mean, I think it's good. I have a feeling that they're going to say, no, we want our parking spaces. And then you're going to be in the situation of doing something that may or may not be for the greater good of other people, but we can reach out.
So, I'm raising the question to see what the council's take is on that. Thank you.
Well, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just along with what Wade's comment is, if council directs, we would be happy to go contact all of those property owners. In addition, just get a, get our eyes on it and monitor. I suspect Councilor Pell is correct, that the number of people that actually park in that section is very, very, very few, because it does get so narrow there. I can't remember seeing a car park in that section. And if they do, it's going to be much closer down to B Street than it is in that upper section. But we can get all of that information. And if it turns out that every person on the road said no and we count a bunch of cars, we'll get back in front of you and say, well, maybe this wasn't the best idea. But that way, we can just move forward with collecting that data. And if we get 100% of people going, yeah, that's a great idea, we'll just report back to you that, that we met all, all that criteria and, and move forward.
Further discussion? I got Indra.
Yes, I'm, I would not be comfortable with that scenario, because I, I think I would like to have the information before I actually make the decision. So, for me, I'm, I'm good with the pedestrian crossing for the students, safe students. I would go for that today. But the other, I would like more information and like what Councilor Pell brought up, the cost, too. So, let's see what we're actually dealing with and how many cars are involved, how many. many properties are involved, and what the additional cost would be. That's, that's where I'm at.
Further discussion, I got Joel?
I can certainly respect both Rob and Indra's opinion. I'm of a different note, being as it's a, I forgot the proper word for transportation planning, but a higher rate of traffic, a thoroughfare, for lack of a better word, yeah, arterial, and people knew that when they bought there. And so I'll be voting yes on it now, but I certainly would respect both of you and whatever, you know, what your opinion is. It doesn't have to be the same as mine.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the table at this moment. Time to direct staff to proceed forward with items one and two, as listed on the screen, with a second. Any further discussion? Rob?
So does proceed forward mean that, like, starting today, we're gonna monitor the amount of parking along that line, or what exactly does that mean to you, Jason?
If you were to give us that direction, and I'm sensing that that's what you would like us to do, we will do that. We will monitor the parking periodically throughout the next month, but also we will get the exact number counts and probably do a direct mailer to all the properties that front that to get a sense of support.
So would we need to amend Joel's motion to include that, or is this...
I think if most council would like it, then yes, I would appreciate the motion being amended so that it's very clear that that's what the direction is.
Thank you.
With that comment on the table, Joel, would you like to accept the friendly amendment to add a traffic to that?
Sure. So I would amend the motion by make a motion to implement the bike lane enhancements and the pedestrian crossings, and before implementation, that we don't surprise the landowners that are gonna lose on-street parking, and we get their feedback before proceeding.
Any further discussion? Indra and then Rick? Indra?
We need a second on that to be amended as well. Victoria, a second?
Sorry, Victoria, do you, do you accept to extend your second with...
Yes.
To include the friendly amendment? Thank you. Indra and then Rick? Rick?
So I just want clarification. Jason indicated we would contact the property owners, but I would also like to just confirm that we will be doing our own observation of the parking that's occurring there, because I would anticipate the knee-jerk reaction of most of the property owners to be, no, we don't want to lose our parking.
Yeah, we'll, we would start monitoring that parking after this direction, and maybe even monitor it for a while before we notify them, just so that those results don't get skewed by letting them know we want to take away parking, so they all start parking out there to show how much it's used.
Any further discussion? Indra?
Just one quick note, I would like to point out that there have been, just because you don't have a bike lane, doesn't mean there's not bikers traveling safely on the road, that I travel there a lot. Yes, some people speed, I'm sure, but that flashing speed light really helped, really helped with that. But so going forward, there are bikers on the road that do that safely. Is it ideal or perfectly safe? No, but what in life is?
Any further discussion? Joel?
I just enjoy how the council is building on each other's ideas and their synergy, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Joel. Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the table to go forward with items number one, two, basically directing staff to go forward with those and implement a traffic count in the same area with a second. And I will go for a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, passes. Do you have full direction, Wade and... Okay, thank you very much for your participation. Next on the list here, we've got, next on the agenda is a GP Nexus Incubator Grant. Looks like we'll get a presentation from Dana?
Could that change for us? Okay. Okay. I'm Dana Pierce with the Economic Development Division, and I'm just doing a quick introduction here about the Grants Pass Nexus Incubator Grant. The council did call for some additional information regarding funding for the assistance to start up the cost of a downtown business incubator. It is related to council goals of economic growth. Back in September, Dr. Kim Fries of the Seed Collective Catalyst, she came before the council and applied for a grant funding to fund that startup cost for equipment for the Grants Pass Nexus Incubator. The proposal aligns with the URA Plan goals, Project 10 to be specific of business incubator, and the funds are available in the city capital budget, LB 6344. The city council had additional questions and requests of the topic. We moved to a future workshop, and so here we are today. We do have Dr. Kim Fries here, and she does have a presentation, so I'll pull that up. She, I also want to note that there are some letters of support attached to the presentation from So Ready, and they're here as well today. We do have the executive director, Blair Sundell, here and his team, as well as Kat Bonney, who is the executive director of Common Connections. So let me drop this down, and I will put up Kim's presentation. And I'll be helping her move through this slide, so we'll be talking about next slide.
All right. I was gonna say, good afternoon, Mayor Sherf, but good afternoon, councilors. Kim Fries, as Dana shared, and I am here to present today on the proposal for the, oops, can you hear me okay? GP Nexus Incubator. On the first slide, I delved into a little bit of the economic development, and as you can see, the goal is to transform allocated economic development funds into measurable job creation, tax revenue, and downtown revitalization, using the urban renewal funds designated since 2017. We will provide entrepreneurs with the resources, space, mentorship, and infrastructure they need to launch sustainable businesses in Grants Pass. These are some of the goals in creating 15 to 30 new jobs within three years, filling vacant downtown buildings, and generating approximately 750,000 to 1.5 million in new local business revenue. Do I need to say next slide? Anyway, I'm the lead, Dr. Kim Fries. I work currently for the Southern Oregon Vision Hub. I also teach psychology classes at RCC. My role is funded through Business Oregon, and So Ready is the fiscal manager. I work closely as well with So Ready. I have some community support partners. I changed the language from my prior presentation just to outline what support partners mean. It doesn't always mean monetary or contributions, which hopefully that will happen down the road, but these are some of the community support partners that would help support the space and the work that's happening in the GP Downtown Nexus Incubator. So you can kind of read those, I'll let you read through those there. Claudia Kraus is here with Beeter Baker to support. She and Pete have a local business. And partners bring programs, expertise, visibility, and resources, and so, little caption on the bottom. Strong regional and statewide partners are already behind this project, so no staffing funds are requested from the city. I wanted to share pictures, because pictures tell a story. You've heard about the 1MC. We are, we started in September 11th, 20, what is it, 25 now, 2024, hosted every Wednesday. It's been a great contribution to community. It's helped us learn more about that ecosystem, identifying gaps, identifying needs of our entrepreneurs. And so here's some pictures of some successful launches, or some new businesses. Stone Metal, a local business, I wanted to share a brief story. They worked with Terry Hopkins. Terry referred them to me, just to give you an idea of the overall, how the ecosystem works. So I met with them, we've been mentoring with them, they need additional capital, they would like to grow, eventually fill a few positions as they scale up. And so through that process, we were able to find some funding through Kiva to help them scale up, and they're on their way to growing their business. They hope to eventually have a downtown location. So just kind of how that ecosystem, they presented the 1MC back a few months, and then they, they visit us again Wednesday just to share their success, so, young entrepreneurs. So market need and opportunity, I feel like this was something that I needed to share more clearly based on my last presentation. Downtown vacancies and aging business ownership threaten local vitality. Entrepreneurs lack affordable space, we all know that. They lack mentorship and resources. Strong regional demand for shared kitchen space for food producers is also an identified need. This supports both traditional, small business, and innovation-driven startups. So there's that workforce piece, a few of my entrepreneurs are in the manufacturing space. Why does it matter to our local economy? I brought this slide in because I feel like sometimes we talk about economics, we talk about entrepreneurship, we talk about ecosystems, they maybe, you know, they sound like they're separate, but they're not. Economic development, entrepreneurship, supporting entrepreneurs, and workforce, they're all one and the same. I was an entrepreneur in the trades, it's workforce. I had several companies in manufacturing and construction. So they're all, they all go together, and sometimes when we speak to these things, and I'm learning, there needs to be clarity in that one feeds the other, and in the end, it all benefits our local economy. So I shared, you received the PowerPoint, but just here's some backup data. Small businesses create most new jobs, 61% of net new US jobs since 1995. New firms are a key job engines, so there's a track in the census.gov site. Startup activity remains elevated, so applications start, employer business remain well above pre-2029. Entrepreneurs are out there, they're wanting to start, they're wanting to be active in our economy, but sometimes they have barriers. Startups add jobs quickly, so four to five new jobs per 1,000 residents in the first year. And this is what we're seeing from Kaufman, indicators of entrepreneurship, they're a lead in the nation, they're also the founders of One Million Cups. And then you can see the other data on the right side, I won't, I don't need to probably go through all of that, but just done some research. And then incubated startups, I think was relevant for this presentation, have an 87% survival rate after five years versus the average 44% of startups that fail within that first year, so. And then each new business adds to tax base. And then there are similar incubators, and they show millions in economic return through jobs and capital investment. What is an incubator? I've had people ask me, is it chickens? Like, what is it? And I forget sometimes that we use this language in the work that I do, and I fail to clarify what these terms are. It's a collaborative workspace that supports entrepreneurs, startups, telecommuters, and freelancers. We bridge the gaps in training, mentoring, and infrastructure that impact every business. If you search and look for incubators, or sometimes you'll hear accelerators, you can really look at what they bring to the region, which is really that third space, creating a space for people to get together, ideate, get the resources and support they need. Every business, regardless of industry, is impacted by the lack of training and mentoring. There are infrastructure gaps, I know this from my work this last year. Incubators provide space, tools, resources, education, and community to collaborate and innovate. So when we, you'd asked me last, last time I presented, what's an incubator, and this has just kind of detailed some of the things that happen within the space. I would say they also grow based on the needs of the community. I've been involved in this work for 20 years, and I've seen some of the incubators change and evolve based on the needs of the community, so they're kind of fun, fun to watch. You have a platform or foundation for them, but again, as the needs arises, the incubator is a space to capture and meet those needs and gaps. On the lower level of that, all the bullet points, it improves survival and growth when startups receive structured services and tools. I have worked in this space, and I understand that firsthand. A lot of times, our entrepreneurs will have an idea, they'll get going, and then they just have too many barriers, they don't understand, and then that idea just gets, I call it parked in their mental garage, never goes forward. It offers workforce training, which I am a huge proponent of. Workforce training is very important. And then the co-share kitchen is just a secondary tool to support those food entrepreneurs, support scaling and training. That was another need that was identified in my work this past year. Next slide? Oh, thanks, Dana. I want to share pictures. I was in Georgia attending some ecosystem building events. It was really incredible to see, I want to share that, the towns that transformed, and Augusta, Georgia was one, that was just the downtown was decimated, it terribly decimated. You wouldn't even think there was a chance for it, but there is a local incubator, it's called the Clubhouse. And just seeing what that Clubhouse brought to that region, how it brings community and business folks together, it surprised me, to be honest. It was quite impressive. And the classes that they run and educational cohorts, I am also from a military family, and there was a really great program for veterans that I absolutely loved, and I saw such a difference in being able to move them through that, that system and help them to kind of find their way, which is really amazing. And then these are the, some pictures from the spaces, so. You can see that they're just filled with lots of desks and spaces and cubbies, and one of them had a really neat, you can write on the board, I mean, on the floorboard and, you know, ideation sessions and that kind of thing. They're kind of transformable, movable. Next slide? So here's some proposed metrics, and I ran some numbers just to give you an idea. So you have something tangible, 15 to 30 jobs over three years, love to see five to 10 businesses annually. I don't think that's unreasonable. Again, the potential to generate revenue, and then that potential of the tax revenue. Year one is conservative, as we roll this out, but I would anticipate three to five businesses in the program. I believe there will be more, two to five actual launches, and then five to 10 jobs created. Again, conservative numbers. Community benefits of an incubator. Funds set aside for a business incubator are available in a city capital project and creates a central hub for entrepreneurs and business support, will help meet the goals set out in our urban renewal plan. The one-time investment at $80,050 for startup equipment only. Sustainable revenue would happen from rentals, workshops, events, classes, those types of things. That's a typical model. Mission and strategic alignment, I feel like that's also really important when building a space. Again, I think these spaces more, as you, the community and entrepreneurs and businesses start utilizing the space, which I think is really great, there's potential for growth. But it would be operated by Seed Collective Catalyst LLC, DBA Grants Pass Nexus Incubator. Although I had a group of youth to share with me that they want the name to be differently, I will tell you, they wanted to call it the Launchpad at the Hype, so I just gave that out there. They didn't know what an incubator was either, so they've already, they're already excited about the space. The mission is to support entrepreneurs and businesses through mentorship, education, and connection, which is honestly in, really missing in, in society, that need to connect with one another. It aligns with the urban renewal goals, fills vacant buildings, support business growth, and revitalize our downtown. Aligns with current city council strategic plan, so we can see outcome 1.1, support businesses, entrepreneurs, and nonprofits to be successful. The 1.1 initiative A, strengthen partnerships and programs that support startup and growing businesses. Outcome 1.4, Grants Pass is a regional center that proactively attracts talent, business, and investment. And then 1.4 initiative B, foster and leverage strategic partnerships that promote collaboration, innovation, and investment in business and employment. Got through all that? So incubator services and programs, I wanted to just be really clear, the main focus is on that business education, workshops, mentorship, networking, connection events. I also, and same with So Ready, we have a lot of resources that, that are across the state, that as I do this work, I'm surprised at how many entrepreneurs and businesses aren't aware of the support that's out there, so resources. Networking connection events are super important, as we've learned from the 1MC. You have to have your boots on the str... You have to have your boots on the street and have events to understand the needs of our community. That's what's been really beneficial with the 1MC. Workforce development, training and coworking space. My background is workforce development and training. Youth entrepreneurship program, I've had a lot of youth, even parents reach out with a really great interest in seeing a program in Grants Pass and something for them to do. Which if you know anything, there's a certain age group, there's really not a lot for them to do. So that would be a focus. And then secondary focus, co-share kitchen, it's not a cafe, but something to support food startups and local producers. Food-based and cooking classes and events, basically a full ecosystem of business support under one roof. The food, the incubator kitchen, I shared and you've been able to read that. You have a copy of the slides, but just to give you a little bit more context to that, there are food innovation centers, it's actually a map, I'd be happy to share out. But they're facilities that provide a spectrum of food science, safety, education and business services for startup and established food businesses. There is a lot of movement in the food industries and that's existing businesses as well. There's some co-branding happening. I'm seeing some cafes, different spaces, co-branding, working together, developing new products in existing businesses because, you know, times change. There's a lot of opportunity. Adaptogens are really becoming a big thing, proteins and everything now, so you don't have to worry about it anymore. So I would love to see us be able to take advantage of some of that movement and hopefully potential funding coming down from the state to support food and beverage industry, which ties in, I believe nicely with tourism. And then there is a large food hub. It's in Oregon. It's, the acronym is Food Innovation Center, but it's FIC. And they provide help with labeling, nutrition guidance, like all those things. But they're at that neck, that higher level. What's happening is people in the food and entrepreneur area are kind of dropping off and not moving forward because they don't have that startup, that support that they need to even get to that food innovation. So Joey's Hot Sauce is one of our individuals that's had great success and is scaling up, but he worked within our ecosystem. It took him a lot longer than it should have. Once he found his way, he went to FIC and got his nutritional label and he's able to sell commercially, which is very beneficial. But on the bottom, I just wanted to let you know that that isn't the basis, the bane of the space. It's just a space to help support food and beverage entrepreneurs through the work that I've done through the hub. There's not much out there for restaurateurs. I was a restaurateur. It's rough and I would like to, in the space, also be able to support local businesses and restaurants with the work we do. Some food incubators positioning themselves as hubs of innovation in their community and/or as multi-service centers for numerous food systems, programs are also calling themselves food innovation centers. Helping cottage industry, commercial licensing to scale up, provide testing, research and development support and resources. I was gonna say, I got another one, that must be wordy, like a very long-winded. Oh, did you go backwards though? Finances. I was asked about the financial part of it. The one-time ERA investment, that's again, that's just equipment only. The other pieces, I'm not asking for that part. Just enough to get the space equipped with some equipment so that we can get moving and we can open our doors. Projected revenue is $52,800. Projected expenses, keeping those at a minimum, $39,300. Two-year growth, you can see there the revenue, the expenses and narrowing the gap. Funding, coworking, kitchen rentals, workshops, events. There's multiple ways to create passive income in these spaces. That would be too much to go through right now, but there's multiple ways to create revenue streams. And then here's the revenue expense overview, just if you want to see it broken out. Again, running fairly lean, but with the space, having the advantage of being community grown, it's, you know, it's not leaning heavy on, you know, renting this huge elaborate space and investing all this money. It's really a minimal, I feel like, investment to bring something like this to our, our downtown, to our community. Nexus Incubator, financial overview. So revenue versus expenses. I broke down the revenue sources, just so you can kind of, can look at those. A lot of these programs will have memberships and sponsorship and, you know, various programs that bring in funding. I, there's something called Fast Track and Co-Starters, those different cohorts that can be offered. I'm really, I'm working out a workforce development, a program, a 12-week program. So those types of things could be offered in the space. Expense breakdown, rent, insurance, admin, marketing, supplies, utilities. So I show that we would operate a positive annual margin of approximately $13,600. Financial sustainability supported by diversified income streams and low overhead. I have experience running a space such as this. I have two experiences. I had a cafe that I created much like this that had a startup in it. And it was great. And I was a restaurateur and it was rough. And it was rough being by myself. So it was really great to have that community. And when we started that, we had five new launches just within, gosh, within six or seven months. So I know what these spaces can do. I believe in Grants Pass. There's amazing community evident in even your comments from the counselors. I appreciate that. So this would be an investment in our region, not to serve just downtown, but to serve the whole business community. Next slide. Oh, I did get wordy, huh? I really got into the proposed Nexus Incubator impact metrics. So you can see those there. I broke it down in category, business creation and growth, jobs and workforce, programming and mentorship, youth entrepreneurship, capital and sustainability. And again, going back to that workforce piece, when we have new startups, sometimes we think of a solopreneur, but not a solopreneur. When we start a business, we hire X amount of people, that's job creation. So workforce is a part of it. I want to get a cough drop. All right, Dana, I'm good. Oh, gosh, that was in.
All right, thank you very much. Bringing it back to council for questions. Any counselors have questions? Eric and then Joel?
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for coming. I had a question on slide number nine. You've got GP Nexus Incubator Proposed Matrix. These numbers, I just wanted to get your take on exactly how we, how you came up with those? Or are they best guesses? Or essentially what is, for everything that you wrote here, what, where did they come from essentially? Where do they originate from?
They originate from a lot of research and a lot of the work that I have done this last year. I've been in Oregon six years and I worked for College of Siskiess, I was a dean of CTE. And so I had a lot of research because I had started looking at the need for an incubator back then. So this is actual research in Oregon and just kind of taking in across the nation, what these incubators can generate. But to give you facts from the work, the Southern Innovation Hub this last year, some of those are factual numbers of the, the businesses that we've been able to see start up and then also the new jobs from that work. So some of it's fact-based from the work, but also some research and bringing all the numbers together.
So essentially, your, your experience and also, I mean, what are we looking at as far as a timeframe here? Can you restate that, please?
You're meaning on the?
I mean, for your, your personal, your personal opinion. I mean, is it, is it opinion or what, what's the timeframe we're looking at here that you based these numbers off of? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I would say that the numbers are significantly impacted from the work that I've done in the last year and a half of the work that we've been able to do. But I would say within the, the last five years, some of the numbers. And averages across the state and from the type of work that would be initiated out of incubator, this is what would be expected. Does that make sense? When I'm plugged into the ecosystem, greater ecosystem, people that I work with. So this would be numbers that we could expect from an incubator startup in our region of our size.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I got Joel and then Victoria and Indra. Joel?
I had three questions. I don't need to ask them all at once. First one was to staff. I'm ignorant on our past business hub, but I know it's been in our, it's been a, a subject that we've wanted to invest in for, geez, ever since I've been on council. And if I remember right, it was through Rogue Community College. And I just wondered what I needed to learn from our history with the business hub and, because I never heard any successes or failures from it. I don't know what, what it is.
Yeah, well, historically, when this first came about and became a capital project, it was back in, I think, 2018. And you're right, Rogue Community College was a big part of that. And they launched in early 2020. But in, of course, COVID happened and RCC shut down a lot of their programs. So, so that's kind of where it ended. And then since then, we've had a lot of community outreach to us saying, hey, when is this happening? What can we do? And that's kind of, Common Connections really kind of held the torch for some years, applying for a federal grant to try and fund it and some various different activities. And it's here today even saying, we still back this project. So the community's kind of kept it alive and loved this idea. Now we have someone coming before us that has the experience, the knowledge and wants to take it from here and move it forward.
So if I understand you correctly, then COVID kind of got in the way of the success of that?
Absolutely, yes.
So then, and this is a question for you, doctor, and I appreciate you coming and appreciate your expertise. Your partnership does not list the Grants Pass Chamber of Commerce or Rogue Community College. Is there a reason for that?
No, there isn't really a reason. I just kind of kept it succinct. But I do work with Rogue Community College and SOU on this project. And then, yeah, the chamber's been fantastic, but I just neglected to show the case in on the slide.
Okay, because a lot of your objectives and your educational things are shared with Rogue Community College, you know, in terms of business and, and classes. And it almost seems like a duplicate effort from some standpoint. At least there could be some synergy there with partnerships that, right now, don't exist. And so I was just wondering why that is.
Well, let me, I'll, I'll step back for one moment. When I was at RCC and I was a dean, I showed up with, you know, a lot of, I've been an entrepreneur my whole life, probably since I was five. I won't tell you about that story when I first started, but there was a lot of talk about entrepreneurship. But if you understand anything about budgeting and, you know, the directions of college, it was really difficult to carve out space to really focus on entrepreneurs. There was a definitely a recognized need. And so that's been something we've talked about for a long time in collaboration. If I could ever get something going, we could partner and work together. Because we had a lot of entrepreneurial mindsets with our CTE folks. A lot of students, I did help them launch. So what that looks like, I don't know. I mean, I think that's the importance of getting this space is to be able to have those conversations for those. SOU just recently reached out and is very interested. I have a meeting with them on Friday about the food, you know, systems. And there's some work being done down there by Vincent Smith. And then someone from RCC with workforce, you know, we are discussing 12-week workforce-related certificate, entrepreneurial mindset, which was identified in the state of Oregon on the huge entrepreneur employable, essential employability skills. One of the top 10 requests from, I think, a couple thousand industries surveyed was entrepreneurial mindset. So there's some opportunities like that for us to work. But again, really getting in the space and what does this look like is essential. And then part of this space is we, myself and Eric from SOU, we designed a design and build innovation jam set of curriculum. And I partnered with that, we offer it twice a year with RCC and SOU. So that helps the students that are interested in Event Oregon. And we had three Event Oregon participants last year from that curriculum, which by the way, has been adopted by Portland State University as the qualifying curriculum from Southern Oregon into Event Oregon. So there are partnerships happening.
Well, it seems like that would be almost essential.
Correct, it would be.
Because they're, they have exactly the same objectives of what you're talking about. Second, the last question I had was economic development. You're gearing towards just one segment of the economy, the service economy associated with restaurants. Is that correct?
Can you rephrase that again, please? I didn't get that.
So when I, so as an economist, there's different sectors out there in the economy. And, and what you're focused on here is not the total economy of Grants Pass. You're focused on one particular sector, which is food and cafes and restaurants, service-type industry. Am I correct in that? So, so if I come to you, I probably wouldn't come to you if I was in manufacturing and I wanted to, to start up something and I needed a 3D printer to try something. Something like that, that would be in a different sector. You would primarily be in the food sector?
No.
Okay, so what sectors are you, are you targeting?
Are you familiar with, in the current tech sector, there are 16 clusters. So we have identified various clusters in that community to be able to serve everyone. And I'll get back to the man.
What's the difference between a cluster and a sector?
Probably semantics, but I can refer to them as, I mean, there are industry sectors. So you have your manufacturing, you have your food and beverage. But in the realm that I worked in and the 16 clusters, so you know, you have, you know, healthcare and manufacturing. We, we're familiar, sciences and those types of things. The space would serve everyone. So the front part of the space would be dedicated to any entrepreneur that walked in. And let me give you an example. I have a manufacturing background. I am working with three manufacturers right now. One has a really cool autonomous drone that they want to produce locally. I have someone that has a Smokey the Bear. We would be able to serve every sector. There isn't a sector that we would not be able to say. And how would we do that? It would be that someone would come in with an idea or maybe they need that next level gap funding or they're moving into seed funding, wherever they're at. Or maybe they just need to know where to go get something, 3D printer or that type of thing. We would be able to direct them. That's what's missing right now is these entrepreneurs, I get phone calls and emails daily that are looking. I have a recent one, he has a Smokey the Bear that he wants to create locally. It's cast iron. I'm in the manufacturing industry, connecting him with those sources, connecting him with Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership. So the space would literally be able to accommodate all sectors, all clusters. There would be no one that would not be, because the servicing that we do with entrepreneurs covers all entrepreneurs. If that makes sense. There, I have such a plethora of entrepreneurs that I'm working with now from all different sectors, creatives, tech. I just launched a launch of a new AI app, which was phenomenal. So we'd be able to science and technology and manufacturing and all of the workforce trades, everyone would be welcome. And when they get in there, basically counselor thing is what, how's we, we talk to them, we ideate and we, we see what is it, what do they need? And how do we help them get to that next stage?
Well, certainly are, are great questions. The capital investment that we're talking about here is mainly food, correct? Food preparation?
No.
And that kitchen?
You know, actually, the, the kitchen is the cost to, the kitchen is there with the hood. It's, it's pretty much, it just needs some basic equipment. No, but that wouldn't be the majority of the.
So, so where does, where, where does the money go then?
Part of it would be some minimal like maker equipment. You're going to need computers, you're going to need a smart screen, you're going to have to have presentation, you're going to have to have desks and chairs and space for these folks to be there. And there's, you know, different, you know, internet connectivity, providing that space. Part of it is that equipment to support those entrepreneurs to be able to move their project forward.
So you're talking like technology?
Yeah, correct.
And is that different than what Rogue Community College offers or what Sorete offers or, or what's out there in the private sector?
Yes, it is.
It is? They don't have that technology?
Well, you know, let's, let's go back to that. I don't have, I oversaw manufacturing and welding when I was RCC. I certainly don't have that, that maker space of that level. I don't have access to that. But I will tell you how it works. When I was there, one of the things that I discovered was that there is this, there is a gap, it's a void, from idea, conceptualization to getting there. So sometimes people are not ready to go there yet. They haven't done the R and D, they haven't built a prototype. They need that help to figure out where do they go and how do they do it? We had a neurocenter device that went all the way and Mellon Research contacted them. But it was through that groundwork, you know, that work that you do, connecting with them, talking to them, getting to the spaces. And you know, the individual enrolled in a manufacturing class at RCC, he was ready at that level. So this is that space to capture all the people that I feel like we are missing, that don't know where to go, they don't know the questions to ask, they don't have the knowledge of how to, how the ecosystem works. And so this space would be able to capture them. And then whether it's SBDC or maybe it's Sorete, or maybe it's the college, I refer people out all the time.
Yeah, it seems like they would be very good resources.
Yeah, yeah, they're fantastic. Yeah, yeah, they're fantastic. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? I have Victoria and then Indra. Victoria?
Okay, I think I have three questions. So on, you have some letters from people who have said, we need to bring this here. And one of them was from the Growers Market. And I just underlined a sentence that it's a difference between $200,000 build out and a $20 per hour rental. That would make a huge difference in small businesses here. And I imagine you've already heard from quite a few who would love to use that space. So definitely the commercial kitchen would be a part of it, but it would not be the only. So that was the question. Yes, is the answer. So and then we have, I think you said somebody from SoReady was here. They also wrote a letter. So I, if they, yeah, if you'd like to come up and just let us know why, this would be a great addition to our community. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you for having me. Blair Sundell, Executive Director of SoReady. We do support this project for the, and I maybe can help clarify a little bit here, too, with the whole incubator and I think, as you mentioned, the 3D printers. As Kim was saying, this, this center is a door for all types of entrepreneurs to come through and then get connected to resources. And as she mentioned, the equipment largely being for supporting that larger effort. It does have a focus on food and beverage, but that focus is really just as a support need of something that's currently lacking. That would be more of the maker space component that we see that is needed in this area. So the thing that we find around the valley is that if there is a place for entrepreneurs to come together and gain resources, become connected, receive technical assistance in a place, that's for them to launch, like hence that name incubator space. So they come here, they learn from each other, they learn from some more structured programming that's available to them, and get access to things that they can't really find online, or it's difficult to find online. So this, what we've found is that Southern Oregon, Oregon in general, has a big focus on food and beverage. And Josephine County, there's a big attraction to manufacturers wanting to come here. In fact, Joey's Hot Sauce that she just mentioned, I don't know how familiar you all are with him. He and his wife are from Manhattan, LA. When they came to Grants Pass, I asked him at the 1MC, the 1 Million Cups at the Hive event that they have every Wednesday morning, why he chose Southern Oregon and Grants Pass specifically. And he said that he had heard from numerous sources that this was one of the best places that he could come to be, to be cultivated as a, as a food and beverage producer, him, Hot Sauce, in terms of the support network that was available to him. So the support network is what brought him here. And then he said, I haven't been disappointed with the resources that have been available to help me grow here locally. Because, I mean, we'll be honest, it wasn't the tax or regulation policy that drove him to Oregon to start his business. So what was it? It was that community of people that could help support him in other ways. That's what the idea behind the incubator space is. And then, like Dr. Kim Frey said, this would have a, not, not a primary focus, but some sort of a tailored offering for that food. But as far as an incubator space goes, this creates the environment that can foster that type of support that Joey has received here. He just hasn't received it in a structured setting. So this is just a, with two cents. Does anybody have any questions for me or follow-ups on that?
Well, I have maybe, I have two more questions that neither one of you could answer. But this sort of program can bring people in to the community, but can it also keep people here? Our young people who have ideas for business startups?
I think that's one of the things. Thank you for the question, Counselor. I think that's one of the things that, that offerings like this does is it makes it a very sticky place to do business. So one of the, one of the major issues that we found here in Oregon, and really in Southern Oregon, is that young people start their businesses and then they leave. If they don't have resources available to them to help them scale, they find it somewhere else. And I think that's the power of having incubator spaces, that there's a, there's fostering growth all the way from the very beginning. Because SoReady, a lot of people think we have this focus on just landing the big whale, get this traded sector company in here, create a bunch of jobs and get that quick hit. But really, the best way you can do economic development is from the ground up and fostering the growth of small companies that become in larger companies. And if you think about the company that is going to be most likely to leave later on, is it the company you just acquired and threw a bunch of incentives at? Or is it the company that you helped grow from the bottom up and they feel a sense of community here? So this feeds right into that second point, which I think is the more important economic development driver for keeping businesses local.
And then, this is maybe more of a theoretical question, but in education, even community college, there may have been a focus on this sort of environment in the past. And maybe there isn't as so much now. Is that true? And so that's why we maybe need some, some new satellite types of possibilities for people to do this sort of thing?
So thank you, Counselor. We're actually dealing with this in Medford right now. So there had been an incubator space in the past, and then it went away. And so there are some people that are reluctant to try to start it back up, and some people that are very excited to start it back up. Just because something has, has gone away in the past doesn't mean that it doesn't have a place still. As you mentioned, there are ebbs and flows. A lot of funding sources will help dictate that, dictate that. As you know, there's been a big change in what's available in technical assistance across the country. And so this helps fill some voids. So sometimes opportunities create a vacuum, and then things like this can fit right in to help support that need. I think everybody's probably aware, if not, of what's happening with the Small Business Development Centers, even score chapters and other technical assistance providers. There is, there is a decrease in the offering. So this can help fill that void. That's from my personal opinion. This is not my project, but we do support it because we see that component.
Oh, thank you. And then my last question might be for Dana on the funding. So this isn't something that council would be finding a fund for somewhere else. This is money that is only to be used for this sort of a type, this type of a project. Is that correct?
Yes, right now it is in a specific capital project for a business incubator.
Further questions? I got Indra and then Rick?
Yes, for Dr. Frey's. I'm going to be all over the place. I apologize. I've got a lot of scattered thoughts and notes here. So this is a, a private business, revenue for-profit business that you're running.
Correct.
Okay. And you're, I had a question about the space. I saw in the paper, you're at, I want to say 218 G Street. You're in the center.
Cape Man Plaza.
Cape Man Plaza. So I, I went by there. Every, there used to be a lot of places there. There's nothing but a hair place now. And I've asked around, and it appears that the owner, Travis Borsma, has said he's not renewing leases because he's not sure what's going to go forward with that. So how, I guess my question is, do you have a written lease? How are you going in there? And are you part of the bigger plan that's going to happen? How do you know you're going to be staying there, I guess?
I'll answer on the first. Yes, I do have a lease. And I will share that on behalf of the Borsmans, just from my conversation, they're, you know, looking for community-based opportunities. So I feel like they are perhaps being choosy. I'm speaking for them. But this was something I've been working on and having discussions since March or April. And so they have a very vested interest in this space. So I do have a lease. And I have not heard about, you know, any of the other, the other changes or anything with the building. My understanding is that they're looking to fill the space with businesses that actually contribute really to the, bring something to downtown region.
Okay. There used to be a lot of food places.
I know.
Restaurants, and they're gone.
Yeah.
Which is what you're promoting. So that's why I ask, how long is your lease for, if you don't mind?
It's indefinite.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me gather my thoughts. And I don't mean to be harsh with this, but you said one of your goals is helping entrepreneurs get funding for different things. So I guess my question is, why are you coming to the city? If you know about ways to get funding, why haven't you been able to get funding for your project?
That's a great, that's a great question. One I will happily answer. So there isn't, you know, when we talk about there's funding, there is funding and there isn't funding. I mean, it's a treacherous path that we go. And you know, as entrepreneurs on the council, it's challenged and fraught. With these spaces, and I was actually going to bring it to share with you today, but I didn't want to bring too much information. There's something called third spaces. They existed when I was a kid, community center spaces, you could go to learn basic things, share community. They're almost non-existent anymore. So funding used to be around in those days to support these spaces. It was something we valued as a country, to spaces for people to get together, you know, share ideas, ideate, socialize. There is, there are people who are active in policy right now. So to answer your question, it's not funding for incubators really specifically, because then we look at, you know, large amounts of funding for, you know, support of the space, for a building and that type of thing. What I'm proposing is something just as simple as equipment, and I will take care of the space and those types of things. When I was in Georgia, I am, I was appointed to a board with the Startup Champion Networks, which is a nationally known organization. You can look on startup champion networks, the acronym's terrible, SCN. But I'm more active in policy now and advocating in that direction with funding to perhaps support more incubators. Because if it works for Grants Pass, it would be great for us to be a leader in the state, which is one of my goals, to be able to prove this model. So that's why I, if there was funding, believe me, I would have found it and definitely went after it. But there isn't.
All right. I guess Counselor King mentioned, seems like a lot of duplication. And I noticed that, too, because some of these pictures, and then what you're saying today about having the desks and the workspace, the Hive does that.
Correct.
So they have that. The One Cups, you run out of the Hive and that space there, which is part of the helping entrepreneurs and counseling. Are you thinking of bringing that out to your own space? And, and then I thought this picture of the workspace was maybe the Hive.
It's similar.
And then you have the picture of the One Cups. So how, it does seem like duplication. How, how is what you're doing different from what's being done already with these groups?
The intent is not to duplicate. The intent is to build upon what's already existing. So through the Hive and Trevor and I, Trevor's supportive of this project, we've talked about a larger vision. When you think about an ecosystem, it isn't just one space. It's multiple spaces is how you grow your ecosystem. It's multiple efforts, and multiple efforts that start to not be duplicative but supportive. So in this space, the 1MC will stay at the Hive for as long as we decide we want to host it. But it's just another space to host support for entrepreneurs in the downtown area. The vision is that the downtown area becomes kind of an epicenter of innovation and entrepreneurship to where there's a map. If you're an entrepreneur, you can go to the 1MC. Perhaps you work with, Trevor does also offers mentorship. And then maybe there's additional spaces. So Trevor and I work in tandem. So Trevor will actually bring entrepreneurs to me. I'll bring them to him. And we work in tandem. There is, if you've been in the space, Trevor has a coworking space and, but it's full. And it's a different type of coworking space. So it's dedicated desks, not a lot of interaction where the other space would help with overflow from that, from Trevor's space, but also allow for more and greater interaction, which is what's needed. So when you're in the space, I have a desk there. You know, you do your thing and you work, but you don't connect. So we're looking at this space being more of a connection. And really, being able to build on the good work that we've started, we do need additional space. We, Trevor's pretty maxed out there. And so we're looking at different ways to create more opportunities for entrepreneurs and business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple more. So it was my understanding from your earlier, when you were here before, that it was strictly for kitchen equipment. So has that, that's changed, it sounds like? Is that right?
No, that was always the original ten. I think that it, maybe I didn't convey that enough, because I think we got, we moved into that, you know, the talk of the discussion of the kitchen so much. But now there is the technical side. That's a really important part of, of the space. You're going to have to provide that technology for these entrepreneurs. And again, we live in a large region. We have some rural and frontier areas. So there's really a high need to be able to provide, you know, computers and printers and that, that type of thing. Sorry, I have a cold.
You've been talking a lot. Thank you. And, and my last question, I think. So we all know our city is in dire straits as far as small businesses going out and going under. And I drove around yesterday again, and it's really hard. As a business owner who owns a brick and mortar, it's, it is expensive.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very difficult. I could not do what I do if I just made stuff in a, in an incubator and sold it out of a truck. Like, I couldn't do that.
Right.
Nor do I want to. But it's very difficult to make a living. So when I, one concern I think I personally have, but also I'm sure other business owners, is when you have space and people then are making a living, like you said, or paying much less monthly rent, utilities, garbage pickup, all of that. And they're yet competing with you for services or products. How do you, what do you say to that?
One, it would be, it's really, it's not a, it's not intended to sell out of this space. This space is typically, you'll have some anchor tenants. It's to help the folks that are cottage industry. Because if you're familiar, you know, you're familiar with all the laws, in order to move into the retail space, you have to work out of a, you know, licensed commercial kitchen, have a license yourself. So it's not a space that's going to create any competition for any of the local businesses. For instance, for you with what you do, there's so, you know, if you wanted to work on some creative options and you wanted to have feedback, you know, you could come into the space and, you know, work on an R and D session together and say, here, you know, I'm in the ice cream industry and here's some areas of opportunity, you know. So it would be used like that. It is not a standalone space that would have businesses selling out of the space. It's merely just a rental for them to help them scale up primarily. Or, you know, there's like, you know, you have to do testing or page level testing, like low-level testing. So if folks are working in their kitchen and they're really not sure, it gives them a space to come in and say, hey, I have a product that eventually, for instance, I have an entrepreneur right now who would really, has something very unique, a product and non-competing, but a really cool product, then they want to move it forward. So they really need the access to that kitchen space. If they decide they want brick or mortar or advance that business, that's what the, it's an incubator, not a, not a restaurant and not where people are going to be selling out of it. But just simply a space to say, hey, Kim, I'm at the farmer's market. I want to sell. In a retail space, they're going to have to use a commercial kitchen to do that. So it's just simply to help people scale up and test their products.
So are you saying that people won't regularly, because it sounds like with the farmer's market, they could, they won't regularly be using the kitchen for their product?
No.
It's like a one-time thing?
Correct, yeah. And it's really highly regulated. Counselor Nicholas, it's because there's a lot of rules. And if anyone is an anchor in a highly, you know, you have to have a much larger space. That's a whole different level. This is really to capture those startups, those folks that maybe have an intention to scale, but not that they, like maybe farmer's market, I'll give you an example. So farmer's market's on Saturday, and many of the folks at the farmer's market have already reached out looking for resources and other things, whatever that is, a catch-all. And so this space would be available, even if it's a conversation or it's resources to meet in that space, but not come in and use the kitchen to produce their product and take it over the market. It's not, that's not the intention. It is a strictly utilized for startup and those folks that are moving to the next level.
Thank you.
I hope I answered that.
Yes.
And Counselor, if you'd like, I can share the breakdown of the funding request from the previous presentation. So it does show, it does show a kitchen setup. the previous presentation. So it does show, it does show a kitchen setup, but of course, that equipment's going to be more expensive than most of this other stuff. But it isn't the only, only piece of the pie here.
Thank you. Further questions? I had Rick, and then Joel. Rick?
So Dr. Fries, on that list that's there, you're leasing the place, and some of that's, I guess there's existing kitchen equipment there already?
Correct. So that equipment is permanent with the building. So there's a hood and the sinks and those types of things, suppression system, all of that that are part of that.
So the other commercial kitchen equipment you bring in and so forth, does that become a permanent fixture of the site? Or if for some reason you had to move, that goes with you?
Correct. It would go with me. It would not be permanent.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further discussion, or further questions? I had Joel?
Yeah, I just, doing a brain dump with you. I had three, three additional questions that you spurred in my mind, doctor, which I appreciate. My nephew went to a culinary school down in San Francisco. I had several people do that. And, and they come out as a chef. And they're, they do very well. And, and the restaurants that hire them do very well. Are you talking about that, like a culinary school? Is that what you're talking about?
No. Well, I don't want to take anything off the table. Right now, you know, it's, it's this, you know, again, driven by need, but yes, there would be, there is discussion locally. I've had this discussion with Terry Hopkins, but a discussion of some type of training that could also be hosted in the kitchen. You know, we're talking about the, the front and the back of the house. Some local restaurateurs and individuals have reached out about needing skilled workers. So I would say that down the road, that there could be some of that workforce-related training. I don't know what that looks like yet. I have spoken to a few chefs that have talked about wanting to teach some classes. So that could be a potential, not a full-blown culinary school, no. But it'd be fun. Probably more money.
Well, it just seems like the capital investment kind of leans in that direction.
Yeah, yeah. No, I would see that.
In that segment of the economy. Yeah. The other thing, I was talking with a member of another group that you're not partnering with, and they talked about, there's been a movement, and it's based on age. And I'm getting old. And so my thoughts are dated. But they come to him and they ask for help and grants. And he says to them, well, really, if you're talking about funding for your business, you need to go see a bank. And you, and you need to present your business loan, you know. And if I'm starting a restaurant in Grants Pass, I need to get my act together. I need to get a good chef. And then I need to go, if I don't have the money, which I probably don't, then I need to present my idea to a banker who will finance me and, and, and help me be successful. Now, now that, that isn't what the younger generation is thinking now. What they're thinking now is, they come to city council, we can get a grant, or we can go to Chamber of Commerce and get a grant. And we don't have to mortgage our home like the immigrants did, or if they had a home. And, and then they get started that way, if there's that amount of money available. And I'm having a hard time adjusting to that. So my question is, as, as we move into this, everybody has to have some skin in the game. And what is the skin in the game here that, that people have? Now, I went to Saturday Morning Market, and that guy that makes the hot sauce, it's great. And I welcomed him to Grants Pass with open arms. And, and he's an entrepreneur. He's done a chemical food-type thing that would be associated with chef's school, you know, and he did it very well. And, and he's making it. So I don't know what your response is to that. And maybe you don't need one. I don't know.
I would like to. I would, I agree with you. Generations, we change and we shift. We were reading an article that we're going to be the last generation that, what was that about, you know, like that experienced some of the things, which makes me sad. The new generations won't. I remember our parents got a microwave. We thought that was really cool and, you know, was amazing. So the, the challenge with, I'll, I'll go to the generations first and then talk about the funding. There is this, this perception that it's going to be easy and there's a lot of grants. I just had to have a hard conversation with an entrepreneur. There aren't grants, like there used to be. And even if they are, there's, running a grant, I've ran grants, not easy, but the money, it just isn't out there just at willy-nilly to say, I have an idea, I'd love to get a grant and run this. Right? There's, there's a piece to being an entrepreneur, running a business. And I speak to all of you, because you're familiar with this. And it goes back to my point with the space. There is a big gap. And I'm not saying it's not RCC. They're on a pathway. I teach classes every term, two to three. They're on a pathway, and I have firsthand hear what they say and where they're at. And they tell me all the time, where are you, Kim? How can we find you? Because right there on their pathway, even I have an entrepreneur that's on the, they're, and they're trying to get into the RM program or wherever they're at, and they still kind of have these entrepreneurial aspirations. There's nowhere for them to go. But here's the thing, there's a lot of misperceptions, because they were reused really differently. A lot of them are not in spaces where they're entrepreneurial parents and people who are, you know, in the know. And so to be able to support them, but also have them set realistic goals, are not prepared for funding. They don't even understand. Most of them don't even have good credit scores. That's where the, the space is so important, is to have those real-life conversations. And I mean, these are conversations about everything. When I meet with an entrepreneur, we have an inventory that we take. Where are you at? And how do you get there? And, and how, how can I help you? So that's an important piece that is really dear to my heart in the space, that I feel is really important, is I, there's a huge education. To be honest, there's an education component missing when you go to college. They just don't know what they're getting into. So...
I had one last question. It's more of a technical question. So I was an economist for the government. I'm here to help. Your jobs, in, in that sector of the economy that you're targeting, the indirect and the induced effect on jobs is a lot less than other industries. But I was wondering, your total jobs that you have here, are these direct jobs? Or are these, and I don't know if you're familiar with that economic term of what is a direct, a direct job is I work for the company. An indirect job is I supply the company with supplies. So like with logging, I, I, I sell logging tires, logging truck tires. And then there's induced jobs where I go buy milk. And so there's a, the grocery store has more employees because they sell more milk. Your jobs that you list here, I assume are just direct jobs. They don't include indirect and induced, or do they?
They would, they would probably cross in both sectors. I was thinking about an entrepreneur that I presented at the 1MC Rogue Produce. So it would be an indirect. He's a very entrepreneurial, but he goes around and picks up produce at the different farms and delivers them for people who want locally sourced products. So he'd be indirect. And then some of those would be direct jobs. I have an entrepreneur right now who's wanting to scale up with maybe three to four potential, you know, openings, if they can scale up. So yeah, I would say thank you for that. That's great knowledge, actually. So there would be both indirect and direct. Because some of the entrepreneurs do provide, for Joey's Hot Sauce, for example, there's, there's some indirect entrepreneurs that supply the specific peppers for a specific season.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Further questions I got, but I do want to remind you guys, we're not here to solve world problems. So I appreciate the conversation about how the new generations don't want to do this. But it's not Kim's job to, to do that. It is, it is here to keep our discussion to the grant that's at hand. And if you could do that, I would appreciate that. So further questions? I had Eric, Victoria, Rob, and Indra. Eric?
Okay. So here's one for, for Oregon specifically. Everybody knows Oregon has, it's the, probably one of the not very business-friendly states in the country. So my question to you is, not being business-friendly and high in taxes, do you offer any help, any programs, any classes exclusively to counter these problems?
No, that's a really great question. I work with Oregon Entrepreneur Network, they're a large organization out of Portland. And there was a NASDAQ report that just came out. It was too lengthy to share through all its 52 pages. But it looked, they conducted a study over the nation, interestingly enough, Portland was in one of the featured 20 cities, just centered around innovation and business. And it did acknowledge that we're, I think we've dropped even a little lower in being business-friendly. There's hope that we can move that needle, I believe, together. Again, that comes to the, that comes back to policy and advocacy within the state. There honestly hasn't been a lot of movement. I mean, we've really feel like we've sat stagnant, where other, you know, states are more, you know, centered around advocacy and policy and how to support and how to incentivize business folks. But I think that for the, and I will, I will share this loosely. It's interesting with the entrepreneurs. They, they love being here. They want to be here. I just have a new entrepreneur from Vermont that I met with. She's moved here. She wants to be here. They want to be here. So, you know, as you're building in your business plan and you're looking at how you're going to generate revenue and where your costs are, you know, that's something that you always look at in that beginning. So we do have those conversations. Some of the autonomous drone, that's got a lot of potential to make a lot of money. And so looking at what, you know, what is the cost with the taxes, building that into individuals' models, or if folks are contracted, understanding there's about 30% fee that is, you know, when you're contracted, you're not taking payroll taxes. So we do talk about that. I'm not there really to counsel on that specifically, but I will say that I can connect them with other individuals that can help them, if I can't answer it directly. But it, it's, again, that's where that need is just to have that space with people, to have those conversations. But that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? I got Victoria, Rob, and Indra. Victoria?
Mine was more a little on the lines of, of solving the world, but questions, but very quickly. A program such, such as yours, I can sort of envision it as being a bridge back to the way things used to be. Because there's so much institutional knowledge that has been lost in schools, in higher education. And so this could be something that could keep that alive. And then those people could, could teach it to their kids. So I see it as something that could be sustaining to, you know, the small business way of life in America. Would you agree with that?
I would totally agree with that. I share the same sentiment. Thank you.
And thank you for phrasing that in a question. You learn. I love that. Everybody learns. Okay. Further questions? I got Rob and then Indra. Rob?
Thanks. I got a few questions. So on slide nine, you know, you talk about proposed metrics and potential generate 750,000 to 1.5 million dollars in revenue. I guess that's maybe over three years. I'm not sure. So how does that create, you've got potential 75,000, 150,000 dollars in tax revenue. How does, how does that tax revenue come out of that? I'm not, I'm not sure if I follow.
I don't know that potential to generate the revenue on the 750, 1.5 million. I think that, again, that was back to the Counselor Eric's question is, based on the entrepreneurs that I've worked with, that potential. And I think when we look at the tax revenue, I, to be honest, Rob, I don't have that with me. But I ran some numbers and conducted some research, but I don't have that in front of me to answer that. I would quit.
I guess, you know, I guess that was my question in that section. And then, just a slight observation there. I'm just wondering how, if you look at potential generate 750,000 to 1.5 million with five to 10 businesses, are those, you know, based on those numbers, do you see how any of those businesses could afford a downtown retail space, based on your numbers that you provided here? Because I don't see it. I don't, maybe you see it. I don't see it.
I think, you know, when we look at the entrepreneurs, Rob, it would be a mix of entrepreneurs. So some of the entrepreneurs that I'm working with, maybe they would need, you know, brick and mortar, and maybe they wouldn't. Some of them, maybe, there's quite a few entrepreneurs that work in co-shared spaces. They're remote or hybrid. So I wouldn't say that, some of the entrepreneurs that have built their business and are looking for brick and mortar, could they afford downtown space? I couldn't answer that. I know rents are very high. I know some aspire to and some have been successful. I see new businesses going in. But it would be a blend of entrepreneurs. Not all of them would be looking to downtown spaces. But it would be nice, you know, when the Dutch Bros headquarters left, I heard from a lot of folks that it just kind of was a drain in the downtown and the community for those folks that got lunch and went and bought things. So I think for the co-shared spaces that are happening in the partnerships, is this going to bring people to our region that maybe would go and buy food and do that? But there's a lot of remote and hybrid types of businesses, or that sell online.
Okay. I guess I just was, when we're talking about the, okay, I just didn't understand with the, with the, the revenue generated, it just didn't seem to me to be the types, types of businesses that would be able to afford most downtown spaces, but I, which was my question. I just, slight correction that I have to just make is that a lot of people thought that Dutch Brothers Corporate generated a lot of lunch business for downtown, but they actually had their own cafeteria with free lunch. And they actually generated almost no downtown lunch business.
Oh, right. Well, that's interesting. Okay. Thank you for that.
But the question I've got is, how would the commercial kitchen that you're proposing be different than the other existing commercial kitchens that are now available in Grants Pass?
So there are, there is a, there are a couple commercial kitchens that aren't commercial kitchens, like we have, like the Grange, we have those different kitchens. They don't have the, the hoods, the type of equipment that's needed for the project that I'm talking about, to go from cottage to, to retail. There is a kitchen, from my understanding, we had a food system presentation at 1MC last week. The commercial kitchens that are here are full, or there's a waiting list. There is another commercial kitchen that Josephine Farm Collective is offering. But again, the spaces are very limited. Commercial kitchens sometimes will have a specific focus in them, and they're more about anchor tenants. So those are spaces where people come in, as Indra alluded to, they come in and they cook, and that's where they cook. Right? And then they take that product out, and then they sell that product. So they're anchor tenants, but they don't have the, the ability to support. You go in, there's no one in there. It's quiet. You cook your product and you take your product and you sell it. Our, the kitchen I'm proposing, and I say ours, because it's for Grants Pass, is more of a supportive type of a kitchen, where individuals can test-market things, get actual feedback, and come in and be in a more of a supportive environment. So I do work with Josephine Farm Collective, and we've talked about, this is a little bit more of another niche need that is needed for food and, you know, food and beverage entrepreneurs. And you're, you know, you're in that space. It's not so simple that you just decide, I have a recipe, or I'm going to make muffins one day, and I'm just going to make these muffins, and that's going to be it. It does, it's the pathway, if you look at a food and entrepreneurs map that ODA, Oregon Department of Ag, it's, it's very long process. So I would be, some spots for those folks to come in. And then, Rob, if they're successful and they want to be in a kitchen, if there's space available and they want to cook from that kitchen, then maybe they'd be better prepared to go do that.
Yeah. It's, it's my understanding that space is readily available at the Fairgrounds Kitchen, and there's others in town too, that, and it can be on a one-time deal, or it can be an ongoing. They're pretty flexible, because they're not filled up. And there's plenty of vacancy. So I just, there seems to be, there seems to be availability in that space right now. It may not have the, the support that you're talking about, the, you know, the financial or business handholding or whatever, but there's definitely available kitchen space in town, from what I understand. And I just wondering if, I guess, I guess your answer was the, possibly the business support that might go along with that. The other, you know, question I've got, I just, you know, have to ask, and I look at all the letters that were in here and so forth, and they're about the need for something like this, or the desire possibly for something like this. You know, and I saw a video of, well, okay, I'll ask the question first. In a certain sense, I guess, why you? And what I'm going, going to elaborate there is, I saw a video of you saying that in the last 30 years, you started 23 businesses. Okay. So can you name five or 10 of those? And are they still viable? They still paying, paying taxes somewhere? They still have business licenses somewhere? They still have employees? They still have employees? Like, what, you know, what is your, what is your, what are your credentials here to actually not only just have ideas, not only just be able to generate reports and so forth?
Right.
You know, what, what, again, how many of those 23 businesses are still, are still employing people, or still paying taxes somewhere, still paying rent somewhere?
It's a great question. Some of those businesses are, one, I actually, I didn't go by and visit, but I own some buildings, so some of the businesses that I started are still there. Other people bought them and are running them. When I left California, I sold off, or, you know, in my business history, I would move from one company to another, and maybe the other, one company would support another company, or there was a business within a business. So, I'll give you an example. I launched my first company at 19, and that was a distributing route. And I built several other distributing routes and other types of distributing routes within that distributing route. Is that a thing now? No. I sold it off. And then, I went in and I bought, expanded into ICE and started ICE Company. And then, I bought a larger ICE Company and expanded in the region. And then, I went into actually blowing ice into Christmas trees, of all things, a happenstance. So, then, we launched another company within there. And I moved from there into other companies, I won't even name, that weren't not my favorite, but a restoration company and other small explorations into these. And then, I moved into road construction. And I moved into chip sealing and crack sealing, and I had a rock-crushing plant. And I built an asphalt plant that took me two years, much the same as of going through the council and getting it built. So, those are some of the companies that I've launched. My brother took the company when I let, he bought it, and he's ran it successfully for many years out of Redding, and he's just recently retired. And some of my employees bought some of the companies and took those and are still running those today. So, do I have any companies today? No. I still have one building that's still running, the cafe, and it's turned into a meat market, so.
Okay. Thank you. I just have to point out something that I found just a little bit humorous, that you said you had a couple ICE companies?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Fries, thank you for the ICE.
Can I share something with you? The San Francisco, the San Francisco Chronicle actually called me, I think, was it his name? Herb called me one time, and he actually wrote an article about it, that I had an ICE company with the last name of Fries. It was a, it was a, it was a source of humor for a lot of people. I enjoyed it.
Okay. Do you have also, you know, I, again, along a similar line, can you give us an example of five or 10 companies that, or two or three, or that you've helped get off the ground people? Because I don't, I don't see any really testimonial letters here that say, you know, that, I don't see any testimonial letters. I see basically letters that say that, you know, they think this might be a good idea.
Yeah.
But I don't see any testimonial letters about what instrumental role you may have played in, in creating many different businesses' success. Is there such a thing?
I would, you know, we share stories with Business Oregon when we report, so I would say that right now, primarily, there are a few new companies through various means. So, first point, a contact with me is, they contact me, they either have a business, they need to scale, you know, there's a myriad of reasons why they're looking. There are a few startups that seems to be growing, so I would say there is a startup 12 years that struggled, I'll leave them nameless. And through connecting, hosting pitch nights, I connected them with Oregon Entrepreneur Network, connected them with other resources, they actually launched their company, and they're getting ready to launch a second. So, sometimes, Rob, it's that ideation space in there, where they've exhausted all, they're so in their head, they've exhausted everything. The point of contact is to be able to talk to someone, and then, how do I connect them? Whether that's, this individual pitched at a couple different places, and they, I'm happy to say they've launched, they've got another company, and they're looking at an app. The Drone Autonomous, they hear about me, they know that'll help, and we meet, and so they're looking at a patent for that. We just hosted a free patent workshop at the Hive. And so, some of these folks that have, are looking for patents, have a, another app that is getting ready to launch. So, it's really, I don't know, I say it's simple, but maybe it isn't. It's really about these individuals who have been stuck and they don't know where to go. And I feel like that is what we offer, and that's what I want to offer in this space. If you have an idea, you want to be a part of our community, some of these businesses could generate a very solid revenue. But if they don't have somewhere to meet with someone or connect, it's, they just stay. And that's what I would say, stoned metal, they want to scale up, they needed, they were in a sticking point. So, be able to meet with myself, Terry Mentor, they created a whole new business plan, I connected them, oops, hi, with the Hive, I'm not the Hive, I connected them with Kiva, they fundraised, they got funding in two days, zero interest for three years. So, to help an entrepreneur that was struggling to get to where they needed to be, is, I think, very powerful, and to a point where maybe they can hire others. So, do I have testimonials? I probably have so many, I would bore you all, and I know it's getting late. If you wanted them, I could, I could, I could share them. They're, they're everywhere, and can I give you exact numbers? No. But I would definitely say that there are folks who would not have scaled, or maybe launched if they had not had the support.
Mayor, if I may, we do have a business in the audience that would provide a testimonial if allowed.
So, I had Indra on the list for questions. Did you want to, do you have your question, or did you want to, do you want to, okay, maybe after Indra's questions? Okay. Go ahead, Indra.
I just want to be clear, because the Growers Market support letter talks about a co-shared kitchen and $20 per hour rental to do exactly what we talked about, that you said it's not going to be used for. So, did she misunderstand that? Or is it going to be rented out that way?
So, it is a space for someone to come in and create a product in a, in essence, they, the changes are licensing, actually Claudia can speak more to this, but it is a space for them to come in to, to advance or test their product, or whatever it is that they would like to do. Now, if they wanted to be an anchor tenant, which is different, so they could come in, they could rent the space, for example, they're, they're in a low acidic range, and they need to test their pH, and they have things that they want to do. Most people don't have that equipment, and they're readily available in their home. They can come in and actually test a product, and work on that product, the formulation of that, and then, take it to that next level. The space isn't such that it can provide anchor tenants those rules and shelving requirements and space requirements. It's not, the, the size of the space is not conducive to anchor tenants. So, if an entrepreneur said, Kim, I need to come in, like Oregon Department of Agriculture's coming down to talk about this project, they're very interested, it is a space for those individuals to test-market their product. So, for instance, Joey, if he didn't have access to a commercial kitchen to test some of his blends and his product, he wouldn't be where he is now, because when you're testing a product, that product has to be sent off for testing, before it's ever able to be sold in that retail market. So, this kitchen is really that pass-through space to take an idea or a product someone's in, thinking about, having them come in, they can rent the kitchen, use the kitchen, and then also get those resources now. An anchor tenant is entirely different. There's very rules, and it takes a larger kitchen, which is why they fill up. It takes a larger kitchen to house that, because everyone has to have their own separate bin, they can't use, you know, shelving, it's very highly, highly regulated. We are just there to help startups, those scaling, looking for resources, that type of thing. Yeah. Does that help? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Rick, did you have a further question, or did, are we going to allow some testimon, okay, go ahead?
Thank you. So, I was on the committee out at the Fairgrounds and saw them upgrade their existing kitchen to commercial status. Did you ever look at that commission, at that kitchen, and what was your decision or your input?
It's great. It's fantastic that we have that resource. I do appreciate that. Again, I feel like, and I know an individual who actually utilizes that space, and he was at the Food Systems, and something he shared that was missing is that ideation piece, like he'll go in and he'll bake in this space, but he has other needs that, you know, he wants to grow and scale, just to give you an example. And so, a couple of people downtown also have existing businesses, and they would like to add products. And so, you know, all the food regulations, this space, in the Cape Man Plaza has a hood, a very nice hood. And so, sometimes, what product a food entrepreneur is creating is subjected to having that hood, which there isn't a lot of hood access. There are a lot of commercial kitchens, but not fully outfitted commercial kitchens. So, because of the hood and the uniqueness of the space, it could help, those folks might still stay at the Fairgrounds. This individual, he's going to stay at the Fairgrounds, but he's very excited to have another opportunity to expand on what he's building on and creating. So, you know, it would just be, it would be adjunctive or complimentary to what's already there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Do we have somebody in the audience that wants to give a little bit more input here? So, go right ahead.
Hi, Claudia with the Bearded Baker. We wouldn't be where we're at without Kim Fries. We moved here about three years ago, went to our very first pitch night, and I got involved with Million Cups. And we had an idea, and to be honest with you, the support, the mentorship, how to navigate opening a business in Oregon, I can Google it all day long, and I can go page after page after page, and I still don't get an idea of what that is. And so, to have partnership, as an entrepreneur, you are alone all the time. I mean, very rarely, when you're launching a business, you're probably in your living room, and you're ideating, and you're thinking these things, and you have nobody to bounce it off of. To watch what happens when you have a mentor, and when you have a group of people like this to back you, it makes all the difference in the world. It takes you from maybe I can to I know I can. Or, it'll tell you, reroute, don't do it, go this way. Because how many times have we launched businesses, and stopped, and started, and not gone where we needed to do? It's also taken businesses that would be this big, and they'd probably do okay, to this big, and now on to this big, which is bringing business back to Oregon, back to Grants Pass. It's watching these kids come in and present a business and realize that they have an opportunity to create a business that keeps them there, to raise their family, and they don't feel like they have to go somewhere else to do it. And when we're talking about commercial kitchens, it's very easy to designate yourself as a commercial kitchen. If I walk in to the Grange, I have an oven and two sinks. That's it. Why wouldn't I cook at home? I cannot cook to scale, I cannot create, I'm bringing all of our own mixers, I'm transporting all of our own product, I'm doing all of these things to do anything, whether it's test or otherwise. They're not innovative kitchens. These are kitchens that my mom, my grandma, my other people, I've walked into a couple of our kitchens that I would never bake in in my entire life, and walked out. So, and as far as being readily available, sure, if I can bake from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on a Tuesday, readily available. Most of us have real jobs. Most of us have not been able to commit to just this. So, yes, we do have a couple, but they are not innovative. They are an oven and a sink and a counter, and that's it. And so, bringing something like this changes the products that we create. It changes the face of our food industry here, right? It's not, I mean, we're talking this in so simplistic, and what we're talking about, we keep going back to this kitchen, this kitchen is this much of a part. It's revenue building. It's bringing in, we've talked with the Pregnancy Care Center, it's bringing in parents having cooking classes. If you get a food box, right, and it has lentils, and it has soup, and it has whatever, half of these people have no idea what to do with that. So, we've talked about education, we've talked about what she touched on, teaching and educating kids to utilize the service industry, to move forward, to, you know, partner with these workforce programs. All of these things that we can bring to the table are huge impacts to our community. And it's all done in this area. Now, imagine you have a single mother that comes in, she's got an idea, she meets with us, she came to a cooking class, she develops this idea, and she brings it forward, and now she's elevated her family to somewhere else. And we don't have these places. We see it in Million Cups every Wednesday, when 50 or 60 people show up. I mean, we never want for a human to show up that says, I want to build a business, how do I do it? Or, here's where I'm at. And we don't pitch, it's not a pitch night, it's how do we move forward? So, I appreciate your guys' time. We're all very passionate about this, and the kitchen is this much of what we want to bring forward.
So, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So, what is your business? And how large is it? And where did it start?
Um, so...
How many do you employ? And all that kind of stuff?
Okay.
And where do you, and where do you pay rent?
Yeah, so currently, we pay rent to any kitchen that we can cook in. We're a baking, we bake. My husband is the Bearded Baker. We currently do pop-ups, is what we do. At this point, we do not have a brick and mortar, there has not, as far as a bakery goes.
I'm sorry, can you describe what a pop-up is?
Oh, yeah. So, we do things anywhere from Growler Guys, we have a portable refrigerator that holds the houses with the cheesecakes, and we do cheesecake samples, and then we do small cheesecakes. So, often, like on Friday night, we were just at Bearded Baker, or at Growler Guys, and sold cheesecakes. So, everybody gets their dessert. We're also on their menu there, soon to be on the menu at the Code Four. So, our whole goal is to be business to business, as well as, we do First Fridays, where On Rare Find has basically secured us for as long as we ever want to be there on that corner to sell our product. But again, to do that, we have to go and find a commercial kitchen, because we have dairy, right? So, we can't cottage bake. So, that changes everything for us. To do that is, I mean, we've been at kitchens at 2:00 AM, you know, to get the space, to get what we need to do. We've also had the experience of driving them home, and somebody runs a red light, and we have to slam on the brakes, and we lost six cheesecakes. And now, we have an event that we're catering, and now we've got to go back and do that all over again. Obviously, this type of kitchen, we're going to still have that same thing, because we need to store and house that stuff, and transport that stuff. So, we started, my, I moved here three years ago, my grandparents have been here since the 60s, we bought their home. My husband came two years ago, and that's when we launched the Bearded Baker. Originally, we thought, okay, this is going to be a great side gig we're going to do here and there, and started product testing, started working with Kim and some other people, and really getting our product out there. And again, it was all about the product testing, getting the numbers, figuring out whether or not it would work, and then we launched from there. We've actually pivoted quite a bit in where we wanted to go originally. We had a few products that my father-in-law had created along the way, and we were going to do that, but we've now have the potential to do a cheesecake bar, which we were, we're now in Applegate Valley, we're on five different of the wineries, as far as an option for them to rent our cheesecake. So, you come and you build your own cheesecake. So, we've only had one out of that, but we've only been on there for a year as well. So, we literally went from an ideation to this, this, we sold 37 full-sized cheesecakes, we sell our four-inch cheesecakes, we've sold 165 in the last two and a half months. We have gotten to the point to where it is potential that my husband will quit his full-time job at the end of this year. So, I mean, and all of that is through that innovation. I sat there, I'm very into, I've sat, I've been in the entrepreneur space for 27 years. I've had four companies. I have started companies from the ground up, I've helped people start companies. Coming here and starting a company, somebody was raised here. I was born and raised outside of Portland. It was so different than any other state I've ever been into. And so, again, trying to figure out what that looks like, and licensing, and who's licensing where, and do I go to the ag? Do I have to go here? Who gives me that information? And we paid almost $700 in licenses we never needed. So, I mean, to have those types of things, and have just the support to go from there. So, I hope that answers it, to where we've come.
It just gives me a perspective of who it was that was talking with us.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Again, and a hundred percent, it's...
And I didn't know if you were one of the ones that, that Kim was talking about, that is now renting downtown space, or filling the gaps and so forth. I had no, I, I thought maybe I, maybe I missed, maybe I missed you where you're downtown, but I feel a little better that I didn't miss that you were downtown, you just aren't there yet, or maybe you don't, maybe you just wanted to be there.
Right. And again, I mean, downtown is, we are downtown. We bring people in all the time downtown, because we were at Gallup and Glimpse and for, for Pink Friday, and you know what happened? 12 people that I can specifically say came in to see us, that bought items from her. Same with Rare Find. Same with Rare Find. People will come and find us for our product, and then they'll shop in Rare Find, and they'll come downtown. Now they're down at First Friday. We have people that come to us all the time and say, I've never been to a First Friday. We came to get cheesecake, and we wandered around, and this is so cool, I don't know how we don't come down here. So if we're looking at downtown, we do bring that to the table. What we, but it's not just downtown. We're talking about Grants Pass in a whole. We're talking about our entire city. We're not Main Street. We are bringing income and sustainability to the city. Anybody else have any questions? I know it's been a long day.
Thank you.
So we really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
No, I appreciate your participation. Thank you very much. So with that, I don't see any more questions from council, and so I will thank Dr. Kim Fries and Dana for your presentation. Thank you for your participation as well. I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Victoria?
I don't know, as though we have, I didn't see in the packet where we had a possible call to action. Did I miss that, or?
Yeah, there wasn't a call to action, I guess, on there. Well, it would probably be essentially the same as the previous presentation from September. We can put that on the December 17th council if we come to agreement and decide we want to do that. Do you want...
Oh.
I can pull that action slide up from the previous presentation.
That would probably be helpful.
It would be, it would be helpful.
So basically, you guys are, we're still entertaining, awarding the grant. This is a workshop, so you would be directing staff to not award the grant, award the grant with amendments, or award the grant as presented to be dealt with at the next business meeting that we have. Victoria?
So I would like to move to direct staff to put together the grant for the $80,050 for the Grants Pass Nexus Incubator, to be put on, I guess it would not be Wednesday night, but it would be at, no.
Future business meeting.
Future, a future business meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to direct staff to go forward with the Nexus Incubator grant and award at the next possible business meeting.
And just for clarity, I'm sorry, was, that was for the $80,050?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it looks like we have a second from Rick. Any further discussion? Rob?
A quick question for Dana. On that, that chart you had up before, because I couldn't quite make it out, I know the original funding that was talked about.
This year.
How much of that, again, was for kitchen equipment?
This shows a commercial kitchen set, about $37,000, and then $7,000 in the second year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I got Joel and Indra. Joel?
So I have a good friend who's a great entrepreneur, and it's been his experience that these grants are not a bad thing. And what, what happens the majority of the time, hopefully it wouldn't happen this time, is that you won't make it work, but there'll still be that equipment that somebody will pick up at a very low cost and make it work. And SBA is famous for that. They'll give a grant for somebody to have a small business sawmill or something like that. They won't make it work, and then they'll have an auction and go bankrupt three years later. But the equipment is there, and somebody else will come in and pick it up for a $1 on the $10 and make it work. I wouldn't do this grant to say that we want you to fail, because we don't. But I do say that that would put that equipment within our community.
Further comments? I got Indra.
Yes, I think that's a horrible idea for giving a grant. No offense, Joel. But...
That's okay.
You know, I obviously support economic growth, but I, I am having a hard time. I, I don't feel, I cannot support the public funding of the incubator under the current proposal. Any startup business is a high-risk of failure, and there's no, I've done some research to, you know, and I see all the numbers, but there's no evidence that they do reliably create more jobs and long-term economic vitality that a business who just started without one would create. And so, you know, it, I guess it baffles me, having started a couple businesses myself, I would not even have dreamed of coming to the city for public funding for a business. And so I'm, that's a roadblock for me, I guess. If you are a true entrepreneur and you want to start a business, you find a way to do it, and I don't think it's the burden of the taxpayers to pay that for you. I get that you say it will benefit the community, but I think a bunch of businesses could say that it benefits, that their business benefits the community. And I think this opens the door to anyone to come in and ask for public money to start their business. And I don't think that is what our taxpayers want, want to, to pay taxes for. The testimony was great. I've had that cheesecake. It's delicious. She did it without this Nexus Incubator. She had, I mean, there's so many contacts, and so you, she met Kim Fries, she went to the One Cups. There's lots of organizations that help people, entrepreneurs, start businesses a lot. And I think it's great, and we need to take advantage of that. We have limited URA funds, and I think giving that towards a speculative incubator process is not the wisest thing. I would like to see our Economic Development Department give more money to manufacturing or higher-paying, you know, I'm not saying that entrepreneurs won't make money. A lot of them do go on to make money. But I think attracting more stable, larger employers into our community is what's needed. And two, I would focus on retention, not startups, because how many startups have we seen in our community that go out of business in two or three years? The downtown is littered with empty businesses, empty buildings, because they don't last. So I would like to see URA money go more towards helping retention, blighted properties, things like that, and more stable, larger employers, wholesale, trade sector, service centers, things like that. And then I guess, this might be the elephant in the room, but I'm going to say it, these, and again, it's through research, publicly funded incubators often have the risk of favoritism and cronyism. And I think that undermines fair access to economic opportunity. And so I think if it's to receive public backing, I mean, we did get somewhat of a business plan, but I really worry because we see, we see a sector, a group, the hive, and it's great. I'm not saying it's bad, but when we look at some of the grants and everyone involved, it's like, it's the same people, and I would do, I have a concern about that, that it's not fair economically to all businesses in our city. And I, I'm not saying that they wouldn't have access to that at all. That I, that is a concern of mine, is I see a group and favoritism, and that worries I think, I guess that's what I, all I can say is, I just can't see giving taxpayer money out to a private business who is then going to go on and generate revenue. And I think if we do it now, we, we should see more of it, and we should not be saying no to anyone else too either. So that's a real concern to me. Thank you.
Any further comments? I got Eric and Rob. Before you do that, Dana, can you please come up and reiterate where the funding will come from? I just, I think we might need clarification on that.
Yeah, so this, the funding would come from a capital project. It's LB6344. It's for the Business Innovation Hub. Right now, there's 180,000 or just over that available, but the current request, there would still be 100,000 remaining. It is a capital project.
Thank you very much. Further question or further discussion? I have Eric and then Rob. Eric?
Yeah, to my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, but as far as this specific grant, I don't know if it would go specific, if I heard you correctly when they were talking, they were talking about a shared community business. It wasn't exclusive to startups, per se, but it, I'm sure it was, it focused on the startups. So I, I don't know if I'm correct on that, if I misunderstood, but was that like a, like a business, community advice type of environment?
Yeah, I think you got it. That's right.
So it's not exclusive to, to startups, is what I'm, what I'm questioning?
No, it would be open to any business at any stage.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? I have Rob?
Yeah, I just want to say that, right now, I'm, I'm leaning against supporting this to the degree that they're asking. You know, it's, but I want to, I want to make it really clear that I'm very pro-business with my own funds. Right now, as I've done for at least five other years, I've got about, well, it'd be between $2,000 and $2,500 that I'm investing in downtown, other downtown businesses besides my own, and I've done it for at least five other years, and I've done it in the holiday season. And the businesses that I've chosen to do that for have a, have a track record. They've proven that they can show up. They've proven that they can solve problems. They've proven that they've got skin in the game, their own money, their own time, et cetera, et cetera. And with this, you know, I'd feel, I might feel differently about this if Kim had come to us and said, you know, I'm looking for a matching grant. I'm looking for, I'm putting up X amount of my own dollars, and I'm looking for something that's matching. In the same sense that we do a lot of that with SDC Help, we do a lot of that with reimbursement on, on facades and things like that downtown. But for really no, no financial into the game particularly, that she's putting in herself, again, I've got, what, this year, six businesses that I'm helping to, that I'm, that I'm supporting. That's with, that's with my money. But that's, when taxpayer dollars are involved, there's a different threshold that I have to be held accountable to. And I just don't, I don't know if this is reaching that threshold.
This is discussion period, so if, if Rob does want a response, then he can ask for...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I did. Okay, thank you.
Did you want a response, Rob?
I don't know that I asked a question, but...
I didn't think so. So further discussion? Rick?
Dana, could you post that, the LB fund again? So how, I know you haven't been here that long, but how long has that LB 6344 been here? And over its history, how many times has it been used?
I believe it was open in 2018, right? Yeah, and then in the first year, some funding was used. I think originally it was at 200,000. They used some funding for a feasibility study. They also received an additional grant of $5,000 that went into this fund, but that was all back in 2018, pretty much, and since then.
So we've only had two applications for that program?
Actually, one of those was, of the two, was a CDBG, because CDBG also has an Innovation Hub line item, and so one of those two was for the CDBG match of 25,000. So we, this would be the first one for, for this funding, I believe.
In seven years?
Yeah.
Six years? Seven years? Okay. And we also have the opportunity to adjust that grant to first year only?
Yeah, you can make a decision on, I will also just remind you that these are reimbursement grants, so if funds aren't spent, then the money doesn't go out. But yes, you can adjust it. We can look at, this was the original ask, 65,000 in the first year, and then the 14 in the second year.
Okay. So you do have the latitude to do whatever you want, but you do have a motion on the table right now to approve for full, full ask, and just as Dana has reiterated, where the money is actually coming from. The LB6344, which is titled Business Innovation Hub, there's the funding that's available. The funding won't be left over. The current motion on the table is to, to offer the full ask. If that passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then you can, then a council member has the ability to put another motion forth, so forth and so forth. But further discussion? Indra?
Yeah, so this innovation fund was made in 2017, 16, a while back, when things in our city were quite different. Can that money be transferred to, out of that fund to other funds?
So this is actually in URA money, is where it originated. So I would say if you're going to close this or move it, it should go back to the URA and the amended plans?
Right, so it could go back to URA for capital projects, like a fire station. Does that count? Is public, can it be used for...
No, we don't have the fire station as a urban rental agency grant.
Okay, but whatever falls under the URA guidelines, yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, so you have a motion on the table right now to fully fund the ask of $80,050. It would be coming from the LB6344 Business Innovation Hub Fund, and I think we've exhausted discussion, so it'll go into a vote. And it would be brought forth at, at the next available business meeting, and then after we do the motion, I will have one more question. Are we in vote? Rick?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Joel?
Well, I'm perplexed at this, because we need help. I'm going to vote no at this time.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, so we have a tie, three versus three. We are missing one, two counselors at this moment in time. So that leaves it incumbent on the mayor to break the tie, and taking into account what I know about the two counselors that are missing, and where they would weigh on us, it could be either or. I would be in favor of this grant because it is coming and it is being funded by a program or a fund that is specifically entitled Business Innovation Hub, and the request is for to establish a business innovation hub. Dana has reiterated that this is a reimbursement program, so they would have to actually do something to generate an invoice to actually collect funds, so I would be in favor of this. So that means the grant has been, will be awarded at the next business meeting. What I would ask for clerical issues is, would you, would the council prefer to have this as a business action item during the next meeting, or put on the consent agenda? Rob?
Well, since two counselors aren't here, I would think it should be an action item. Unfortunately, we'd probably go through the same length of time through all the dog and pony and discussion, but since two counselors aren't here, and you're assuming how you thought they might have voted, I guess that makes it appropriate to actually hear how they would vote.
Perfect.
They could vote against, they could have to have it pulled off the consent calendar, that's possible too, if they wanted to. But...
So we have a counselor that suggests that we put this on as an action item, so any discussion on that? Or do you want to give me a thumbs up to put it on action item? I got one, two, three, four, five. Joel?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like the majority of the council would like to see this as a council action item to give everybody to weigh in on it, because we do have two missing counselors. Dana, Aaron, do you have full direction in this?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your participation, audience members and applicants. Next on the agenda is Urban Renewal Agency Grant and Catalyst Project.
Thanks. Everybody breathe.
Go ahead.
All right. So I'm going to be reviewing our urban renewal grants and catalyst projects. Again, I'm Dana Pierce, Economic Development. So last year, the council approved, or I guess the agency approved, a five-year implementation strategy for priority projects for the Urban Renewal Agency. And so this is a list of the projects that are in that five-year strategy. The water treatment plant, debt service payment is a priority, completion of the Owl Lot Plaza, a catalyst project for housing or mixed-use development, also known as the North Star Project there at Washington and Midland, the public swimming pool, our urban renewal grant and loan program. And then some other projects that also made it onto the five-year implementation strategy were the water sewer and transportation at the Southeast Industrial, that's also known as Spalding, and the housing development program. So I'm just going to go through each of these and provide some updates for each project. We did have the Jason M. Kennedy Water Treatment Plant have its groundbreaking on July seventeenth this year. The URA has prioritized the debt service payment. And with the loss of the BRIC grant, we anticipated the need for an increase in URA funding. So on November fifth, the council agreed to increase the annual funding amount for that to eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the remaining term of the URA. On the Owl Lot Plaza, this is the parking lot being transformed into a downtown plaza at Southwest Fifth between G and H Streets. Here's just some dates to note, the construction timeline. We do have this week the invitation for bids closing. And then on, hopefully, the December seventeenth agenda, we will have a contractor selected for approval. We're looking at January twelfth as a start date, so a notice to proceed, and then an estimated completion of the project by May twelfth of 2026. The Urban Renewal Agency did commit one point two million dollars in FY26 to complete this project. The buy, we had to buy a BRIC campaign. We raised about twenty-eight thousand dollars. We could continue that project if we want to, to raise some additional funds. But we did get an engineer's estimate for the construction. It's looking like it's more like one point nine million. The actual amount will be determined after those bids come in this week. A closer look at the North Star Project. On November of 2024, we, the agency purchased multiple properties there for about two million dollars. And then in September of this year, we purchased an additional property for four hundred and twenty thousand. Staff has given directions to go forth and get a redevelopment opportunity plan started. So, and the purpose of that would be to prepare an innovative and mixed-use redevelopment plan, also provide a commercial market and feasibility study. And then this plan, this tool would be used to guide infrastructure and land use decisions. It would also hopefully be designed so that it could be attractive to an experienced developer or an investment team for that property. The vision for that property is really an attractive vibrant hub to meet the city's pressing housing needs and serve as an active activity and employment center. Here's a little picture of the property and a quick timeline. So on November fourteenth, we did close the RFP for the redevelopment opportunity plan. And then tomorrow, December second, we will be conducting interviews for the top scoring applicants. Again, this will go to the December seventeenth agenda. And then just looking at the year, January through September, the work for that opportunity plan would happen. That would be research, analysis, community outreach, design, and plan development with a goal to adopt a plan in October of next year. The caveman swimming pool, the council has given direction and had a workshop in September to stabilize the pool structure and consider adding some amenities. The URA is looking at potentially up to one point five million dollars of support for that project and looking out to the community for sponsorships for more amenities for that project. Right now, park staff is currently obtaining their cost estimates for the pool stabilization and equipment. The next priority project is the Urban Renewal Agency Grant and Loan Program. These are the grants that have been awarded so far this year. Some of those projects, those that are below twenty-five thousand dollars are approved at staff level. So if you haven't seen those before, that's what those are. We've got the vintage management one is a Seventh Street building that got some facade improvements. You're familiar with the Ozon Holdings and Oregon Center for Creative Learning Projects, as well as Magazine Exchange, Saxon Family. They had a roof replacement on one of their commercial buildings. It holds multiple businesses right now. And then a smaller grant for plaza sewing. And that was a facade, that was for some painting on the public and publicly viewed walkway there. Let's see, and this is just generally speaking to the program itself. Since its inception, we've awarded fifteen awards totaling four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And ten of those projects have been completed at this point. We still have some of those larger projects that are underway. And then other grant awards that were provided outside of the program, we had two separate infrastructure grants totaling eight hundred and forty-three thousand, five twenty-two. That was for home bridging, infrastructure on the north end of town for the Scoville Project, and then a magazine exchange out on Spalding. So the next thing in the plan that we haven't quite addressed is the Housing Development Program. It's, last year, in 2024, staff brought forward a concept for a system development charge buy-down program. And what this looks like would be an incentive for developers. It's for market rate multifamily housing development, so there'd have to be three or more units in the project. And in this type of program, the URA assumes responsibility for SDCs up to a certain amount. In other cities doing this type of program, it's five thousand dollars per unit. We are evaluating what that would be and make sense for our city. But your return on investment, the URA can pay that SDC at a future date, so we don't have to pay it right away. It's something that can be paid over time. And then the property is taxable upon completion, so that money immediately, that property immediately starts to generate tax revenue, so. If this is something the council is interested in, we can move forward. We had municipal changes, guidelines, and application and a program agreement already drafted for this program. We would just have to finalize those changes and documents. And then we could bring an ordinance and resolution to council in January. This is just a quick financial overview. This is what's in the plan, plus the few changes that have happened. So you can see, actually, I should probably switch to a pointer, because this is so small. So you can see for the two years, the amount that goes to the water treatment plant has increased. And then this put in the actuals for the infrastructure grants. It's also, what else does this include? I think that's it. Oh, and then the changes here, instead of the five million for the swimming pool, the one point five approximately that we would look at. And then if we were to include some other increases, if you look at the downtown plaza increase to one point nine, and also the opportunity plan costs, that increases this project a little. So you go from about one point seven, or sorry, five point seven million to six point five million. This is just, I guess, more like a narrative to explain that. But when we look at the strategy and the financial allocation updates that we're looking at doing, our current account balance is at six point seven million. If we retain and potentially increase even the downtown plaza project, you're looking at one point two to one point nine million. And we're still, of course, waiting on estimates for that. If we retain the URA grant program allocation, we would keep that at two hundred and fifty thousand annually. And then update the strategy to show that reduced allocation to the public swimming pool. And then we would need to make that allocate, that addition to allocate funding for this North Star Project Redevelopment Opportunity Plan. Those are, it's estimated to be between one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty thousand. Again, that's something that we'll be able to finalize probably this week as far as numbers. And then there's the question of an addition of a housing incentive program. So the call to action or the question to council today is, does the council support adding funds to, funding allocations for the Owl Plaza, for the North Star Project, and potentially for a housing incentive SDC buy-down program?
Thank you, Dana. Any questions from council? I got Victoria?
So on slide thirteen, is this, I just want to be clear. I thought I was clear. Now maybe I'm not so sure. So is this the total layout of what, where we would be and having all those funds plugged in this chart here?
Yes.
Okay.
No, this first one is what it is right now with the ones that have already been, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. This is the one, if we were to max out what goes to the Owl Plaza and max out what we assume we're going to be built for the North Star Project.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from council? Going once, going twice. Thank you very much. I will bring it back to council for further discussion. Joel?
Looks good.
I don't want to cut off discussion if there's other discussion.
Rob?
Yeah, Dana, could you remind me, because I have no idea, the magazine deal, what is that again?
Magazine Exchange, their company, they are off of Spalding Avenue. They were awarded a grant fund of a fifty thousand dollar amount for infrastructure on their actual property for water lines. But they were also awarded a separate infrastructure grant, I guess it kind of all came together, for the street utilities. I'm sorry, I'm not using the right term, but to extend the water line at Spalding there.
Why is it called Magazine?
Magazine Exchange?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. I mean, maybe they originally started by exchanging magazines, but they actually sell trading cards and things like that.
That's the tie-in. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Further discussion or action? Eric?
To be clear here on page twelve and thirteen, they look very similar. I just wanted to, I think that's what we were discussing here. But I think what I'm seeing, the only difference is year two and three, they're looking at the numbers. Those are the only slight differences. It's not very much.
It's not much.
Can you explain, can you explain the difference there?
Yeah.
Why they're different?
Sure. I'll go back to the first one first. And you can see what we had originally allocated to the downtown plaza, the Owl Plaza, was the one point two million. And then this four hundred and twenty thousand is just reflecting the purchase of the new property up there at Midland and Washington. And then also, I should note at the top again, you can see that the numbers have doubled for the water treatment plant. And then on the second one, I guess that's reflected here as well. But you can see for the plaza, that's showing the one point nine assumed based on the engineering estimate. And then an additional one hundred and forty thousand here at the, for the, I'm sorry, what? Yeah, for the North Star. I'm sorry, that's under the Housing Development Program. It's for North Star. Does that make, is that?
Yes, I see that now. So that was, is pretty much just those two lines that are different.
Yeah.
Everything else.
Yeah. And those are just the two, two of the things that we haven't yet discussed. So wanted to show that what the difference would be there.
Any further discussion and/or action? Victoria?
Well, I will move to support adding funding allocations for the Owl Plaza, North Star Project Redevelopment Opportunity Plan, and the Housing Incentive SDC Buy Down Program.
With a second from Joel. So we have a motion on the table to proceed forward with allocating Owl Plaza, North Star Project Redevelopment Opportunity Plan, and Housing Incentive SDC Buy Down Program. With a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll go to a vote. Rick?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, that motion and action proceeds forward. So do you have direction, Dana? Or do you have questions?
I think we do have direction. I guess I would just ask if there was any opinion on the amount of funding we wish to put towards the housing incentive program, since we haven't gotten that before. But I also, I guess I don't know if we.
So the housing incentive program, you had put the eligibility was, URA assumes responsibility for SDCs up to a thousand per unit to be determined. But you did mention that you were looking into that?
Yeah, as far as the amount that we wouldn't typically is charged for that type of housing. We looked at it for single-family units, and it was eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per unit. But we have to evaluate it for multifamily.
Does any counselor have a question in regards to that? Go ahead, Victoria.
Well, I was just wondering if you could, I don't know, maybe in a memo or something, come back to us with a possible, that might work.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
So we'll just say to be determined?
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. All right, next on our workshop agenda is agenda review. You all should have a copy of your workshop and meetings through December, or starting at December first, two thousand twenty-five in front of you. Any questions? Rob?
So I don't know if this needs to be on an agenda or whatever, but I'd like to know what council is doing with regards to finalizing the manager's evaluation.
Definitely, there's a question. I believe most councils probably want to know. Do you want to take that one, Victoria?
Well, I don't have any, I don't have much more information than any of you have here, except for that I thought it was a good idea to move forward with the evaluation process having a third party. So that's what I suggested that we do. And I don't know if there has been any movement on that. So I'll get an update on that probably right now, hopefully as well.
So just to reiterate that I did get involved in this a little bit, because I was actually trying to do the job as the mayor and consulting with council members that brought issues up to me and trying to help out with formulating a solution or remedy to those different issues. So in regards to that, there was a suggestion to have a third party, as was discussed by you guys as doing this in the future, but actually basically doing it now. but actually basically doing it now at this moment in time. I got responses back via email from, in support of, basically one, two, three, maybe four counselors in support of. There was questions posed by another counselor, there was questions posed by another counselor. So I had more, there was more received favoritism to go forward with this. And if we do need to pull those up, we can. But it is, it is still the decision of you guys, council, as a whole to deal with this. Go ahead, Victoria.
I think that if we had three counselors who objected by today, I believe, or maybe it was tomorrow. So I'll have to go back and look at that email. Was it the first or the second? I believe it was the second, and there's only been one objection thus far. So if there were no more than, if there weren't two more by tomorrow, then I think it's something that we would go forward and do.
Rob?
Okay, I did not support or object to the email because I felt that the email was clearly deliberating behind closed doors outside of public view. So I wouldn't participate in that because I don't really want to open up the city, myself or the city, to ethics violations. I don't think that deliberate email is appropriate. And I think that that's, anything that Victoria may have just said about any, any comments that had come in one way or the other would be classified as deliberating outside of public view. So if we want to have that discussion as to why anyone even feels that we need to either change our communication style, change the form, or whatever else, that needs to be either right now or at a public meeting. But as far as relying or justifying it by some email communications from last week, I think it's 100% inappropriate.
Thank you. I, I have, Erin asked to weigh in on this a second.
Just to try to provide clarity on the processes, as comments that have been brought up by different council members. I think moving forward, if council has a desire to pause, put a stay on the, the current product and process of the evaluation of the city manager and move to a facilitated one, you would be able to provide direction today to do that. That would be an easy enough thing to do. Or you can do so at a Wednesday meeting under Managed Mayor Council and Staff, potentially. And then that would, that would make everything clear moving forward if you wanted to do that. And, and then I'll get to work on, on trying to make that happen.
Victoria?
And the reason why I wasn't deliberating behind closed doors, I think that this particular job falls to the council president. And I would need somebody to tell me differently if it didn't. So I don't think that it's, it is categorized the way that, that Rob was saying that, although that's not, that's definitely not something that I want to be doing. But I think that's why it was done that way. So it, I don't think it falls under deliberation outside of the public because of that. Or, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to be wrong on that. It's pretty important.
I'm not aware of any serial meeting type of aspect at this point. I don't think our legal counsel is either. I think the, the mayor was just, did, did an outreach saying, hey, this is the direction we're thinking about going with the discussion with the council president and asking if there was any concerns, but I don't think there was deliberation. So from my perspective, if council wants to move to a facility, pause what we have currently right now, move to a facilitated process, I'd be more than happy to concur with that. And we can make that happen if I get that council direction.
Looks like good questions or comments from Eric and then Rick. Eric?
Since this was all brought up in executive session, should we be going to executive session to discuss it? Or are we fine doing it this way?
You're, you're talking about a procedural decision at this point. So you don't need to go into an executive session for that. The executive session would be the substantive matters regarding the actual evaluation.
Rick?
So I'd just like some clarification. The work that's been done and the input that's been provided at this point would still be relevant. But it would be, the consultant would then provide new input? Or would the whole process be totally changed?
I think that the, the work, the current work product, which is not the finished product, could go into part of that process. But I think the third-party consultant would be, my understanding of the process, would be contacting and getting feedback from all the council members through their process that they have and provide through, through those comments and through contacting and talking to the city manager. They would come up with a process that would not look just like our evaluation, but would have some input from what you've already, the work product that you've already put into place. But then they would add some of their facilitation experience to come up with a finished product that would represent council's evaluation.
Thank you.
Rob, and then Indra. Rob?
So as far, as far as what I thought we did at, when, what day was it that we met? Was it Wednesday? I can't remember.
Monday.
Oh, Friday. Monday, sorry, Monday. To me, I thought that was basically finished product and that we had decided that we were going to give each other a couple of days to possibly finalize any changes or any changes of heart or scoring or whatever we want to do, and that we were essentially done. Now, we did discuss the possibility of in future years enhancing or improving the, the, the process. We never at that time discussed hiring facilitator for this year. What I am concerned with as far as hiring a facilitator for this year, most of you probably don't know, I don't know if Joel and Rick remember, but past council discussed that. And Council Fager and myself, I guess, were appointed by that council to meet with a facilitator of Aaron's choosing at that point. And we did, we met, and DJ and I had a very similar opinion of what that was like. And to do this quickly at this time, because this process, I believe, actually does need to be improved, to do it quickly at this time, I will guarantee you, we'll end up with a product where some people will say, that's not what I said, that's not what I meant, that's not at all what I meant. And we shouldn't have been rushed into it. Because I can see how we need to improve this, but I can also see that that process is going to take time. It's going to take deliberation on, there's a number of ways we can improve it in the future, whether that's looking at other, what other cities do as far as looking at their evaluation forms and us deciding how that will improve our form, borrowing from some of those, whether it's deciding that we need to hire a facilitator to come up with new criteria. But to have a facilitator put on their bureaucratic polish to our answers at short notice, I guarantee you, will not, there'll be complaints that some people will say that, gee, they're, the way they wanted to say something or their feeling on something was not represented if we try to do this quickly. And that is what will happen. And again, I, I base that on meeting with a facilitator before and seeing exactly what they do and what their job is. I mean, the one that we met with that Aaron chose was a retired city manager. And frankly, part of what he did was put bureaucratic polish on, on evaluations. And the way people like that get hired or referred again is to please the bureaucrats. So that's, you know, if we do this quickly, that's what we're going to end up with. I don't think it's appropriate for this year. I think it's probably needed. I agree with the majority of the council. It's probably needed for future years. If we do it quickly, we won't end up with something that any of us are happy with. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, we wrote our evaluations. We all theoretically gave them some thought. We all theoretically gave us, put our honest feelings down on there. And there should be no reason why anyone would want to back away from that at this point, especially with the fact that we gave everybody a couple of extra days to, to clean up whatever they might have put on there that they had second thoughts about. So I'm, I'm definitely against this year and, you know, in a, in a rushed process to change at this point.
Further discussion, I had Indra and then Victoria?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but I took my time and did the evaluation and turned it in. And that's what we all decided to do. Do our evaluation, turn it in. We had the meeting. So I'm not sure what changed in the meantime because nobody talked about a consultant or asked for a consultant before. I, I'm, then we had extra days to change. I read mine over, like, I don't know what I would change. I, I did it professionally and had nothing really to change and put in there. Perhaps hearing, I didn't get to hear the session, perhaps hearing some things other people said. I don't know. Would I have changed the score or not? But I'm comfortable with what I produced. I would submit that again. And I don't, I, I can't justify spending $6,000 at this point on a consultant, regardless of what their product is. And so I don't get why we were fine with it. And then whatever happened, suddenly we're not fine with it. That should have been already determined. Could, could the process be improved or better? Possibly. And that's something we can talk about going forward. But I think if something happened, that, if we can't do an evaluation and scoring and talk about it and come up with a product aid of us professionally, it's, to me, it's pretty sad.
Further discussion, Victoria?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to rush this. So I, I, I don't know, it, that would be concerning. But I don't see that this is a new rushed situation. I think it's just a pivot from what we were doing. So, and because there were concerns from multiple people that came to mayor, that I think that's why we are, why we are doing it. So anyway, I don't know as though it would be a new rushed thing. I think it would be more deliberation, so it would be less rushed. But perhaps I, it would be explained to me differently. I don't know.
I got Indra and then Rob?
So I guess, I mean, if it's not secretive executive session, I guess I would ask, what, because the emails went to, I guess, Council Marshall or the mayor, like, what, I don't know what the concerns are. I really don't.
Rob?
Could someone at some point explain that, is what I would ask?
Rob?
Well, I'd like to hear an answer to Indra's question. But also specifically, Victoria just said that there were certain, and Clint also, said there were certain counselors who had concerns. Well, who are those counselors? And maybe they are the ones who could tell us to answer Indra's question? And what, what are the concerns that those counselors have? Like, why, why is everyone remaining nameless? If, if we have no names, I'm not gonna, I'm, because this was done behind closed doors. It was done in an email outside of public view. How do I even know that any counselor's had concerns about finalizing this year's evaluation if no one's going to raise their hand and say it was me? I'll go so far as to say, I don't believe that anybody objected to it unless someone says otherwise.
Well, so objections were brought to me through the council president. And would you like to address the objections?
No, I don't think so at this time.
Okay, so I guess you would have to reach out to the council president and see what the objections are. Because this was done in executive session, I don't feel comfortable in restating that. You were in the executive session, so it was basically pertaining to my comments in the executive session. So you, you, you were there.
So we have nobody here that's willing to say that they wanted to have this changed for this year? Not a single person who's here says that they want to have a change for this year. Because if we don't have it, then we shouldn't change it for this year. We should just finish it and move on.
That is the purview of the council to do what they need to do. If this is facilitated by the council president, go ahead.
Well, but I think that, well, now it's clear that, I mean, it fell on me to the parameters of the evaluation. And it, and nothing was done wrong. We, I've already been assured that there's no behind the scene, you know, behind the doors issue with that. So that's, that isn't an issue. So I, I mean, we can, we can vote now. I don't know if we want to vote now because there were two counselors down, but that would be also up to the, to the, to the council. But I think it would be better to have the input of the full council if you guys want to vote on it. But that's just my personal opinion, but I'm not directing. If it is in fact, though, if it does in fact fall on the council president, and that actually I believe is in our charter, or it's, then it would be something that I would just want to do. So, so I'm going to find, you know, it's a fine line here. I don't want to, I don't want to push something on to the council. But I also do want to do my responsibility of, of being the procedural, doing the procedure for the evaluation. So anyway, I hope that helps.
No.
Okay, so the?
I need to correct something, Clint.
Okay, yeah, okay, go ahead, Rob. I was trying to add to that.
It is not the city, it is not the council president's job to decide the parameters of the evaluation. They are to facilitate the evaluation. They facilitated it last Friday. They do not decide the parameters. They have no more input than any other counselor. So that's, that's completely wrong. Okay? So it's not up to the council president to decide the parameters. Or to even, they can recommend like any other, like any other of the eight counselors. And for that matter, they could even recommend, I suppose, like the mayor could. But it's her job to facilitate. She did it. I didn't see any problem with the job that was done facilitating it. And at this point, I mean, we can stretch this thing out forever, I suppose. Still don't know why. Indra asked why. I'm asking why. I'm asking who? No answer to any of it. This is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. We need to move forward, put this thing to bed, call it good, and next year we can discuss. It will be a long discussion coming up with parameters and coming up with a form and possibly hiring a facilitator. That will not take a week or two or three. That will take much longer than that with any council, especially this council. But with any council, that would take a while in the same way that the compensation task force took a while. Things will take a while. I've been through part of this already. It's not going to happen, it, it won't happen done well in a couple of weeks. And again, we, we completed it. And anyone who wanted to change it was free to do it. I say move forward.
And I'm gonna let Erin weigh in?
Yeah, I, I think, I really appreciate the conversation that's occurring here. And I, I think everyone was acting in, you know, in the, for the best of, of everyone. And I think the council president was, was trying to facilitate and accomplish a, a healthy process that would provide for a, a positive experience for all parties involved and a, and a polished work product. I know the discussion, obviously, just based on what we're having today, would, I think, show and demonstrate that we do need to change the process and that a third party is likely a really good first start. And that would, that could be determined and discussed in great detail moving forward in, in the future. I think just right now at this point, I don't think there's any people to blame or fingers to point at. I think everyone was just in, in their, in their best interest trying to do what was best for the council and the organization, et cetera. So at, at this time, you had the council president that did suggest that moving into and finishing the review, whether it take an additional two weeks or it take an additional two months to accomplish through a facilitated process based on experience from, from this year's evaluation. And council definitely could go that route with some additional direct. And council definitely could go that route with some additional direction, or you can just continue and close out what we've done this year, look forward to some kind of change in the system next year, which I think, no matter what happens with today's direction, should be on the schedule in January, February, to come up with a plan so we can move forward in the future. But, so that's what I had to say.
Go ahead.
And I would just say that if council wanted to move forward, well, I think we need to consider, to just leave things as they are, or I think we would still need to afford the opportunity for all counselors to, because the evaluations are kind of like in a stasis, I guess would be a good way to put it. And, well, there's one counselor I know who just won't be back for 12 days, she's out of the country. So if we wanted to just continue as is, then we would need to wait some time regardless. But, so if people wanted to go back to the original, it would still have to wait like two weeks, but then, because as we stood now, it was if there weren't, or we decide to go with what was discussed, which was if there were not three, and so now it's been deliberated in public, so Rob would feel comfortable to say, you know, I don't want to do that. So if there were three counselors by tomorrow, because that was what we were talking about doing, then if there were three counselors that objected, then, I don't know what we were gonna do after that, just default back to the original or not, but, so, those are two options to kind of crystallize them a bit. So if council wanted to wait, do the evaluation, they would still be in stasis for like two weeks, because there's one counselor who's out of the country. And if, and so there's one option. So, and then the other would be to go ahead and do this facilitator, and, but you still have until tomorrow to object to that. So is that, does that make it clear for everyone, or is that clear as mud, and I need to explain it a little better?
Go ahead, Rob.
Well, first off, I have no idea where this arbitrary deadline of tomorrow at what time ever came from, I guess that was part of the behind-the-scenes whatever that I didn't want to participate in. I'm just gonna make a motion that we finalize the evaluation, the evaluation's finalized as of tomorrow, people can put in whatever their last best offers are, and we take a vote on that now.
Okay, so you have a motion on the table to finalize the employee valuation as proceeded forward with, and there is a second on the table, any further discussion? Go ahead, Victoria.
Yes, once again, I objected behind the scenes, we've established that that, I mean, that might be your opinion, but that's not the fact. So, and there is a counselor who is not here, won't be here for two weeks, and was under the impression we were doing the different evaluation process. So I would object, I would not be for this because that wouldn't be fair to this counselor who is gone. So, there's that.
Joel?
Well, I kind of stay on the sidelines here, but as I listen, I don't see a purpose as to why we would change, it hasn't been stated. And maybe it's, people don't feel comfortable stating it out of executive session, I'm not sure. The other thing is, it's great that a counselor's out of the country, but we need to deal with a quorum in our rules, and if I'm out of the country, I trust the rest of you to vote, and I'll support what you vote for, because that's just the way we work. And with all due respect-
Well, she wouldn't be afforded the ability to evaluate, that would be the, that would be the end result of that, that's what I was trying to communicate.
She wouldn't be afforded the opportunity to evaluate?
Because she hasn't turned in an evaluation.
Because she hasn't turned in the original evaluation or her comments?
I think maybe it's if we went, if we put a stay on our current process and we move to a facilitated process, we would need at least two weeks until she's back to start that process.
I could understand that, I could understand that, okay, okay. But it's not that I agree with it, but I understand it, okay.
But it was also brought forward if, that not all counselors have turned in their evaluations or re-scrutinized or redid their evaluations, so it would not afford her the opportunity to add or subtract or amend anything after the executive session?
Yeah, I understand that as well, and that's part of a quorum in how things work.
Rob?
So, I disagree with the concept that a counselor was not afforded the opportunity to change, because if that counselor actually read the emails that went around last week behind closed doors, they would have known that it was quite possible that by the end of business tomorrow, this thing was going to be finalized. That's the way the emails were written. I can read them if you want me to, but that's the way they were written. They were written and said, if we don't have three counselors who object to this, then if we have three counselors object to this, we're just gonna move forward. So that was clear last week to everybody, that that's the, in my opinion, the, well, I won't talk about my opinion, but that was, that was what was on the table. All the counselors were in the executive session where we all said we were gonna give each other a couple of days, and the only reason I think we did that is because Indra was out of town. We were gonna give each other a couple of days until Indra had a chance to reconsider, because everyone that night could have reconsidered like every other year that we'd done evaluation. You can change whatever you want to write that night, based on what you heard in discussion, based on what you hear from feedback from the manager, you can change it that night, and it's done that night. That's the way it's been every other year. This year, because Indra was out of town, because we had a scheduling snafu, because we had a long meeting and so forth, and we weren't able to do it the original time, we did it on a day when Indra wasn't there, we decided we're gonna give her two days to potentially change things. That's the way we left it in the executive session, that's the way all eight counselors, well, seven counselors other than Indra, heard it that night. So that counselor had full knowledge that within two days, that was gonna be finalized. And then the emails that went out last week somehow said that by December 2nd, we're gonna be done. So everybody's known that we are either finished or close to finished within a couple of days, everybody knew that, so everyone had a chance to change anything. And most importantly, they could have changed whatever they wanted to that night. I believe there was five of us or four of us that night that said, we're standing pat, we're fine. You know, what we wrote, we wrote, that's fine, but we did give everyone the courtesy because Indra wasn't there. And that's actually the fact of what happened. So we want to spin this now and say, oh my gosh, we've got to wait two more weeks to give everyone the fairest possible chance, everyone had a fair chance, and we all theoretically did our best job and submitted it, and then, due to an unusual circumstance, we gave ourselves two extra days. Those two extra days are done.
So, we did afford a counselor the time because that counselor was out of town, now a counselor is out of town. So I just think it would be a courtesy to do the same for that counselor, and there's no spin, it's, I just feel like it's a courtesy to do for her, although I understand what Joel was saying about quorum and all of that, but the pivot was changed. So that is, that was the understanding of that counselor. So I'm just advocating for that counselor to have the extra time, if we are gonna vote to do it the original way, then we should afford her the time when she gets back. So there's that.
Eric?
I will say that, you know, all of us got to see what everybody was changing, we did not get to see that from Indra. So whatever we do, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it the same way we started, or we go to the consultant. But in either case, as we get those opinions in, that causes a lot of other people's opinions to possibly change as well. So that's one thing that we did not have the advantage of having as Indra's input because she was gone, so.
Indra?
I made it clear to someone, I was the only one not there, I'm not changing anything. So whatever you read is what I'm going with because I'm comfortable doing that, I said that earlier, and I don't see, I just think we need to go forward.
So I made a motion, is there a second?
There is a second, we were going through a discussion, is there any further discussion? So there's a motion on the table with a second to proceed forward with the evaluation as is. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go into a vote. Rick?
This is a hard one, because I think something of this magnitude should really have the full council on board, we're missing two individuals. The process we have before us has been done, I don't have a problem with having a consultant. I have hesitations on trying to come up with a new method at this point, if it just sticks with what we have. So I guess on being a hard one and the unknown, I guess I could go either way, but I'm not sure dragging this out is gonna be any, is a beneficial way, although I fully support of the city manager as indicated by my scores, and I guess I would vote in favor.
Rob?
Once again, yes means we're going forward with what we have, right? We're finalizing it as of today, that's what a yes vote means?
Correct. For clarification, the motion on the table is to proceed forward with the existing system and not change anything or go back.
Yes.
Eric?
So, Rick, you voted yes to go with the current. I'm gonna, because I really, from the beginning, I don't like this process altogether, I think it's a horrible process and it needs to improve. I have no problems with leaving my score the way that I did it, and I explained the changes I had. That being said, I am a no for this, I want to change the process right now from the beginning.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
I'm no, because we're down two counselors and they should have had a say in this.
So I have four yeses and two nos, the motion on the table was to proceed forward with the existing conditions or the existing procedure of the evaluation and not stop and change it. So there's four yeses and two nos, so that means that motion passes. You would need clarification in the motion as the deadlines have changed and you do have some miscommunication between counselors that are not here. So I would put it back to the council to set a new deadline for adjusted scoring and comment sheets to come in for tabulation, out of respect for the people that are not here. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to make a motion to do that, to wait for the other two counselors to be able to turn in scores, because otherwise, they have not evaluated.
Again, that is my opinion, I'm putting it up to council as I'm not involved in this process, as you guys need to, like, I just think that's courtesy for people that aren't here, but I'm gonna open it up for discussion for you guys. Rob?
Clint? We just made a motion that said we're done with it, with that, as of, that we're done with that, that was the motion we just voted on. You can rephrase that any way you want, but that was the motion we just voted on, was to finish this process as of now. We voted yes, we're done.
So at this point, I would go ahead and veto that motion, as I am in full here, because you are not taking into consideration that you have two counselors out, they, one of the two counselors specifically said that they were going to change their, and amend their comments, you have other counselors that wanted to amend and change their comments on this dais that did not turn that in. So if you want the motion to go forward, I would say, great, motion go forward, do a friendly amendment to set a deadline for that, that's it, that's all I'm asking for.
First off, I'm not even sure if you can veto a motion, but we can check the charter on that, but I don't even think you can veto a motion, but, and you might want to check that, okay? I made the motion-
I will, I will, if I'm overstepping my bounds, I'm just trying to get the point across here, Rob.
Your point is clear, your point is clear, you're not, you weren't a part of this process, you don't facilitate in the evaluation, the Mayor has no part in this. Now, maybe in this situation, well, actually, the Mayor has no part in this process, you're now taking a part in it, that's okay, if that's what you feel, you can step forward with. But the fact is, we made a motion to say we're done, because everyone had the opportunity to change whatever they wanted to change, both that night and in the subsequent days, everyone had the opportunity to do it. And when you wrote the email last week, you even said, if I don't have, if I have three people that object to this, then by December 2nd, we're gonna be done with it. That's what your email said, I'll paraphrase, that's what it said. You never say anything about waiting two more weeks, you never say anything about having all eight counselors weigh in. So I'm just going by either what we, the motion we just made, or even your email of last week that said we were done as of Tuesday, not we're done in two weeks if and when we have a full council come back. That wasn't in your email at all, at all, zero, right? So we made a motion, we voted, and now you want to change it, you want to change it from what your email said last week, you want to change it from what this motion was today, and still we have nobody that said, gee, there's something that was wrong with this, and I want to change it. Nobody has said, I want to change my scores, not publicly, that's for sure, no one's copping to that. Why is this a problem? I mean, nobody's telling me why this is a problem.
Well, you should know that what the problem is, because you were in executive session, and I stated upfront, because it was in executive session, I'm not at liberty to discuss it. Okay, so if you are not willing to, so the motion stands as is, because obviously I overstepped my bounds, right? Absolutely correct. I was just, I apologize to all of you for that, I was just trying to actually make a point and get a point across, but obviously, my email to you guys was sent to council at the behest of the Council President, and it did state that if counselor, if three counselors came forward in objection to going forward with a third-party consultant by December 2nd, then if three councils didn't come forward by December 2nd, then we would proceed forward with a third-party consultant. It had nothing to say that we would proceed forward with the current situation, because the email was posed to counselors as stopping the process and facilitating a third-party consultant as was discussed during the executive session for future, the idea was to do it in present to facilitate that. So, but if you, you guys are good with standing on the motion at hand, that's fine, I was actually trying to object to give counselors that weren't here the opportunity to submit their changes, as well as counselors that are here to submit their changes, because obviously, we can even ask people if they wanted to change their stuff, did you submit it? And I don't think people did. So, procedural-wise, I cannot do a single thing, I have brought up the concerns that I have that I know that I will get from counselors as we leave here, so if those concerns are not entertained by you guys as a body, then that is your purview. Eric?
I am completely unaware of what, how we're gonna move forward here right now. What's the deadline to turn in our changes, if we had changes? What are we doing here? I have no idea what's going on. I know a motion was made, but it's completely unclear.
Counselor, that's a great question, because we've talked about a lot of stuff now, so let me try to clarify based on- so let me try to clarify based on what I know from the past direction coming out of the executive session, and that was that we went through and people were able to modify some of their either responses or their scores or whatever, and then there was also an opportunity for, the date was Wednesday, last Wednesday, to turn in all final, all final changes, so the changes that occurred in the executive session along with anything submitted between then and the Wednesday would be what we're working off of right now as the final document.
So, we were given the opportunity to make the changes, and the deadline was the second, so if we found out that we're going to go a different route, that means that we didn't turn in, the folks didn't turn in the required changes, so now when are those required changes?
The deadline was the 26th of November.
Okay.
So that date has passed for anything to change.
Correct, so the changes that we discussed in executive session that other people had as well are not going to go?
No, those are all represented in the document.
But there were some changes that still needed to be done that we had for the second, I believe it was, of November?
The 26th, that Wednesday, was the date that was discussed coming out of executive session where all changes need to be submitted.
I'm sorry, the 2nd of December, I saw somewhere in the email, 2nd of December is when those changes are going to be due.
I believe the 2nd of December was a response that was, said, hey, we're looking at, going into the direction of hiring a third-party consultant, if we don't hear from three counselors that are object, then we'll move forward with that process, that's the part, that was the December 2nd deadline, that didn't pertain to comments from the original evaluation.
But knowing that there was another, that things changed, I made a phone call and asked, hey, are we going to turn in these changes, because I knew the deadline was there and I think it was a Wednesday, we needed to turn it in on a Wednesday, I said, okay, well, if we're going a different process, then I'll hold on to my changes, I'll hold on to the updates, and so those updates were never put in, even though some were put in at the executive session, for some others, I'm sure they had changes as well, so my question is, again, when do those changes get submitted and is it too late? And if that is the case, then I think that's completely ridiculous, because that's what we discussed in executive session.
Well, I think ultimately, that's for council to determine, I think if there was confusion on the submittal and the date and individuals didn't have an opportunity to submit, then that's something to discuss of maybe a modification of the motion that was just passed to provide for a date, say sometime this week, for you to submit any changes or whatever, but that's ultimately a council decision, and that would require a modification of the motion that we currently have.
I agree, and that's why I brought up the point that this motion was, should have been, there should have been a modification to that of some kind, if that's the motion that came forward, because again, we have counselors that are out of country, and I have, I know of other people that have changes that didn't get them submitted, so, and that's just the way it is, I mean, we can argue back and forth here amongst ourselves, but I think that the timetable probably needs to shift a little bit to afford those other counselors the opportunity.
Rob?
Okay, so I'm really not, I'm not following what Eric said at all, because at the Monday, when we did the evaluation, at that time, we decided we were going to give everybody two more days to let Indra, that's actually what we, how we left it in the executive session, there was no other option about December 2nd discussed at all, nobody, that was on nobody's radar when we were in that executive session, that's a fact. And right now, that's a fact, there was no other discussion at that time, Aaron just repeated it, that was my understanding as well. Right now, if it makes Eric feel better, that he thought that December 2nd was going to be the final, because the bottom line is, the email that went out last week never said that we are going to move forward and discount this year's evaluation, it never said that, it was in flux, so everyone at that time, reading the emails of last week, the emails of last week, everyone may have thought that December 2nd, once Clint got involved, people might have gotten confused and thought December 2nd was actually going to be potentially, a potential last day, right, a potential last day might have been December 2nd, based on the emails that council got last week. I will make another motion, in the interest of fairness, if Eric really didn't understand that we gave each other two days last Monday, if he really didn't understand that, okay, I'm not sure why, but I will say that I would give people, I'll make another motion that would supersede my last one, that would say people have until close of business tomorrow, December 2nd, the arbitrary day that Clint put in an email.
How generous.
That I never, that I never agreed to, and the council never agreed to, but I will, in the interest of quote-unquote keeping the peace, make it December 2nd at 5:00, and then that's, we're done with that, but we never talked about, we never talked about anything else, and that's just how anyone could have gotten that impression in that executive session, is beyond me. So I would make a motion that would say tomorrow at 5:00 is when people have to complete there, and anybody who was in the executive session would have actually thought it was November 26th was the last day, that's what we left in executive session, that would have been a reasonable assumption, but if it makes people happier to be able to say they got one last day to do it, to change whatever they need to change before the public sees it, okay, I would say that we can do it as of tomorrow at 5:00, that that would be final time. If anyone would like to second that motion, that's fine.
I would second that, but I would, with the proviso that I don't know where Counselor Benham is and if he would be able to get that, get this update, maybe someone here does know and can let us know.
Counselor Bennett, at the time, said that he was totally fine with his and was willing to move forward, that's what he said in the executive session, he never said he had any plans to change anything, and there was at least four others that said, three others at that executive session that said the same.
But I think...
He did make comments that he wanted to change a few things, but he was, he was good with everything that stood, but he thought if everybody else was doing it, he was going to change some stuff. Eric, and then Indra?
Okay, I just, okay, so Karen sent out an email on the 26th, that is correct, that's when I was going to turn in some of the changes, or all of the changes that I had, okay, so the 26th of November, which was a Wednesday, I held off on that because things were going in a different, in a different direction, and I'm just, I'm glad to hear that, you know, Rob is so benevolent in allowing that to happen, to change these things, but the bottom line is, that these things have to be put in and have to be fair, I mean, for Aaron, for everyone, for the council. So we went a different direction, I asked the question, can I turn in these things tonight on the 26th, or should I hold off? We're going to hold off, I have the changes, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if all the other counselors have their changes, so the problem is, it's not going to be fair for the other counselors, so that's where I stand.
I had Indra?
Rob's very benevolent, because I wouldn't change my motion, I don't get, this is the problem with working, talking to people behind the scenes, one at a time, because I don't get how Eric thought things were going to change when I had no idea things were going to change, and evidently, some other counselors didn't, it's, who did you hear from that things were going to change? Who, by who?
The council president and the mayor.
Said things are going to change and we are going to do something different?
I'm not going to get interrogated up here, but what I'm saying is, things changed, and it was put up on an email, procedure was changed that way, so that's what it was, that's what happened.
I would like to, the procedure did not change, because I didn't hear back, I'll wait.
Okay, so Rob has, did, sorry, Rob, to clarify, did you not want to make an amendment to your motion or make a second motion?
Can I make, I'd like to finish my point, if I could.
Oh, I apologize, Indra, everybody stopped talking, so go ahead.
Well, you guys were talking, so I didn't get the memo that things had changed, so this is a real communication issue, and this is what I mean by, we have horrible communication, because if things really changed, why wasn't I told that things changed? In my email that I got from you, which was exactly what Rob talked about, it was that if, if three counselors didn't object, you would move forward, I was one that objected, I never heard anything back, I never heard, yes, I got three, we're going to do something different, or not, nothing, so I don't know.
If I could just speak real quickly to that, because this might answer your question, I think if the other counselors who are gone today were here, this vote would have gone differently, so that, and the reason why I say that, I'm not trying to dismiss what you're saying, is because...
Well, you interrupted me.
Oh, I thought, I apologize, but I thought I was trying to answer what you were saying in that why hadn't you heard back, and that is because a majority of counselors were going to go the different direction, that's what it appeared like, but we had until tomorrow to decide that, so I wasn't trying to dismiss anything you were saying, but hopefully that explains.
Well, now I've lost my train of thought, but I don't know how a majority of counselors thought we were going in two different directions, if I didn't get that information, am I not important enough to get that information, like, I don't, I don't get it, let's just move on.
If I, if I, man.
No, no, no.
Nevermind, okay, I won't then, it's all right.
I'm done with this.
Okay, all right, well, I will say this one thing, I think that we heard from a majority of counselors, but I wouldn't have spoken for everybody because there was still a day, so I hope that explains it to you, that's what I was trying to do, so I wasn't trying to interrupt.
Thank you, but I don't think you can speak for counselors that aren't here either, so I would like to say that.
Okay, so I don't, I'm not going to argue this, but I do have to clarify, I'm looking at the emails right now, you received the email, Indra, you actually responded to the email, because I responded to you, and then you responded again, saying thank you, because I basically told you to consult with the council president, so you were in that email chain and you received it and you responded to it.
I admitted that I got the email and that I responded to you.
You said you didn't know what was going on, I'm not trying to argue, but you're responding back and forth with me in regards to that email.
Did you, did you say that we were moving forward with a consultant?
Yes, I said, you, I said in my email response to you, because you reiterated some other things that Rob had said, and I explained my position in authoring the email and said that the email was co-authored and was by the facilitator, which was the council president, and you needed to address the council president with any grievances or anything else, and then you responded, thank you very much.
I had no grievances with the council president.
You just stood up here and said that you were not informed and that you, but now you're admitting that you proceeded forward with the email chain, so.
I didn't say I wasn't informed, I said I got...
You did, do we have to roll the tape back? You totally did.
I said I got your email that said if you got a no from three council presidents, or three counselors.
I apologize if I'm accusing you of anything, but at this time, I think we're beating up the dead horse, Rob, question back to you, are you making a second emotion, or are you amending your first emotion, emotion?
Well, my first motion was already voted on and approved, I'll make a second motion that says, because apparently some people feel better, 5:00 tomorrow would let them change whatever they want to change, I'll make a second motion that as of 5:00 tomorrow, our evaluations are final.
Second? Joel? It's been motioned and second to give a deadline for 5:00 tomorrow in regards to any changes to evaluation notes and/or scoring, any further discussion? Rick?
Yes.
Joel, I mean, Rob, sorry.
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Well, I'm sort of a yes on this, but I'm going to vote no, because I still didn't get an answer as to whether or not Seth or Kathleen would be able to evaluate, so I'm a no.
Okay, four yeses and two nos, so the motion passes to give a timeline or a deadline of tomorrow at 5:00 PM to enter any changes for evaluation scoring and/or comments, and I would look to, Aaron, can you send out a message to counselors, or at least the two counselors missing?
We'll send one out to all mayor council based on the direction today.
Okay, is there any agenda items that anybody wants to bring up?
I would like to, I would like to have the support of hopefully two other counselors, I'm, as we talked about, economic growth and small businesses really struggling, and I know a lot of that is because residents are struggling financially and not spending as much money, and we've had a lot of closures, we have a lot, everyone knows all this, I would like to have a small business task force, I asked for this months and months ago, and nothing moved forward, and I think something was supposed to be on the back of the agenda, it's my fault, I haven't followed through with it, so I really want to put this on the agenda, I will follow through with specifics, but basically, the task force would include small business owners, a council member as a liaison or part of it, perhaps a staff person, whatever you guys think would be fine, but to really look at the problems small businesses are facing in our city, and how, and not necessarily financial, how can the city help our small businesses and retain businesses, I would like to see a task force with small business owners in it.
Okay, thank you very much, I was not ignoring you, I was writing everything you said, and I actually think that's great, and we have support from Rob as well as Joel, and I'm sure, and Rick, so it's on the agenda right this second.
So what we can do moving forward is, is I can get with Indra, I think we have a meeting later on this week, we could talk about that and what the spirit of that is, then staff can draft something for your consideration at a future business meeting that would create a task force, and based on what I'm hearing from council and what you'd like to see as an outcome ultimately with the task force.
Yeah, and I believe I have the concept of that too, I would like a little bit more, I think what we'd have to do is maybe brainstorm kind of like as a little bit more defined task than what they would do, but I think this is a great premise. Anything else from any other counselors? Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to the agenda going forward? Okay, seeing none, then agenda review is over, and this workshop is, we've gone through the agenda of the workshop, so I would proceed to say we're done. Thank you.